Yes, Mayor Patterson, we do have quorum.
Okay, thank you. So first, we have Committee of the Whole closed meeting?
Moved by Councilor McLaren, seconded by Councilor Holland, that council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole closed meeting to consider the following item. A litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality, and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, 556 Princess Street, Ontario Municipal Board.
Please vote. And that carries. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space and walk side by side into the future. We were just meeting in Committee of the Whole closed meeting. We did discuss one item concerning property at 556 Princess Street. So with that, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by Councilor Bohm, seconded by Councilor Turner, that council rise from the Committee of the Whole closed meeting without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the added's. We have, excuse me, an added delegation, a motion of congratulations, an additional new motion, and some communications. Can I have them over, please? Moved by Councilor Neal, seconded by Councilor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Council McLaren.
Thank you. I, Jeff McLaren of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 3, Report Number 53, in that I have been advised that I have a conflict, and in that case, I'm declaring a conflict of interest on the interim control by law.
Thank you. Council George.
Thank you, your worship. I, Kevin George, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my, it's not a pecuniary, just a conflict of interest in the matter of the closed meeting item, as I have a personal relationship with the subject matter. Best way I could word it.
Thank you. Council Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause H, the third of that clause, and Report Number 52. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a pecuniary interest in this matter. Thank you.
Council Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number 54, as I am a licensed realtor. Also, I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter regarding the interim control by law, as I am a licensed realtor and developer.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no other declarations, we will move on. So we have no presentations this evening, but we do have several delegations. So first, Hal Linscott, President of the Board, Condominium Corporation, FCC Number 28, will appear before council to speak to Clause D, Report Number 52, received from the CAO regarding a request for noise exemption, Ellis Don Corporation, Providence Care Hospital Site 752, King Street West. And just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, members of council, thank you for letting me appear on this matter. As his worship has indicated, I'm here as President of the Board of Directors of Front Net Condominium Corporation, located at 1,000 King Street West. As well as in my personal capacity, I would note, for council's information, that there are approximately eight other residents, as well as some board members that are here tonight. The application is with respect to the demolition of the old Mental Health Services building. And that building, just to cite it, is south of King Street, west of Portsmouth Avenue, across from St. Lawrence College, immediately north of the new Providence Care Hospital, and on the west boundary of the hospital is Lake Ontario Park. And our building, in which there are 90 units and many residents, we are on the immediate, we are on the west side of Lake Ontario Park. The hospital to be demolished is on the east side. So we are in relatively close proximity. The bylaw defines noise as a sound that is unusual or excessive, that is unwanted or disturbing to persons. In my comments, I will submit that the request for this extension falls within those categories. It's unusual, it's excessive, it's unwanted, and it's going to be disturbing to persons. Construction noise can have a significant impact on people's quality of life, and in some cases, to a degree, be a contributing factor to the degradation of someone's health. The noise bylaw permits construction from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday to Fridays, 12 hours a day, six hours a week, for a total of 72 hours a week. Ellis Don's request is an extraordinary one, to be allowed to continue to make noise from demolition from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Monday to Friday, from May 3rd to September 1st, the summer months. What it means is that residents in the community, and it's not just 1,000 King, there are many other residents, northwest and east of the hospital to be demolished, will be potentially impacted by noise for 92 hours of the week for a four-month period. And as you'll note in the staff report, council has never granted an exemption of that nature, an exemption of that duration, four months, and for four hours. The work Ellis Don proposes to do is not just the demolition of the old hospital, but the construction of a new road, essentially the extension of Portsmouth Avenue, which, when completed, will be turned over to the city. Underneath that road will be completely new infrastructure, water, sewer, gas. So when you install that in that area, you're having to use ho rams. That work's going to be done from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. But that means that for 12 hours of a day, six days a week, we will have heard noise from demolition, plus all of the other affiliated construction noise. So the submission is that after having this type of work done 12 hours a day, six days a week, to add another four hours for five days of the week, that's a cumulative impact of noise that will have a very negative impact on residents, as well as users of Lake Ontario Park. The objections from our condominium and from others are not a case of NIMBY. We understand the importance of Providence Care Hospital. We understand the importance of other public infrastructure. For example, St. Lawrence is going to have a construction project this summer, within the normal hours permitted by the bylaw.
30 seconds.
But there has to be a proper balance between the objectives of the public and private infrastructure, and we submit this extension does not permit that. We understand the challenge Providence Care has with parking. But for whatever reason, there were probably good reasons, they chose to move the St. Mary's site into the new hospital, rather than defer that, demolish the old hospital, and then move it. It's not fair in our submission that the residents should bear the brunt of that decision when it comes to noise.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Council Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. So from what you've said last summer, well, for a number of years, the entire hospital was built with the normal seven-to-seven. There was a lot of noise, but it was all contained in the seven-to-seven building, this entire complex?
That's correct. So the new hospital's been built over, I'm going to estimate, the last couple of years, within the normal hours permitted in the bylaw, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I can't recall if they did Saturday construction. I don't think a lot of it. And there were no objections to that from the 1,000 King residents or from the board. We heard noise, we heard light, or saw light. There were negative impacts, but we didn't have a problem with that. We understand the importance. It's the additional four hours in the summer months that we are concerned about.
Council Neal.
Yes, thank you. I know when we've been faced with other noise exemptions, staff have been able to work out some kind of mitigation plan. Are there two or three recommendations that you could make that may not be ideal, but at least would make this more palatable?
So I mean, we understand that this is a challenging decision for council, a decision where they need to balance the public benefit of Providence Care Hospital and the impact on people who come there when it comes to parking, against the negative impacts of extending the hours of work when noise can be constructed. So while we don't think council should approve any of the requests, if council decides that it does, we think it should limit the request. We think that noise should be permitted with certain restrictions from 7:00 to 9:00, but not beyond. I know the submission from Ellis Don talks about only carrying out indoor work from 9:00 to 11:00. And I guess, I'm not sure what that suggestion of that was. Maybe the suggestion was that it wouldn't generate any noise. Well, you can carry out any kind of activity you wish, if it doesn't create noise. So arguably, they don't need an extension from 9:00 to 11:00, if they do what they say. We are concerned in the 7:00 to 9:00 period about vehicles that have audible automatic backup alarms, and many construction vehicles do. I don't, and those are perhaps one of the loudest noises that carry to us from other construction sites. So we don't think that should be permitted. We appreciate Ellis Don's commitments to trying to do this job in as, in the intrusive way as possible, but we're concerned, they have objectives that, they have corporate objectives to meet deadlines. And we don't think that merely relying on their undertakings is sufficient. We also appreciate that Providence Care has the right, they've told us contractual right, to shut Ellis down, Ellis Don down, if it makes excessive noise. And that's, that's helpful. But, you know, Providence Care is balancing a number of considerations, goals, and objectives, one of which is to get their parking completed. So we think staff should be asked to, by council, or directed by council, to continue to monitor this work and take appropriate measures.
And my last, second and last question, if I might. You're also asking for a reduction of one day a week and one month in their overall request. Wouldn't that, how would that not lead to them returning, asking for an extension of their noise exemption to July council, for instance?
Well, they might. However, you may have noted in one of the Ellis Don letters that while they asked to be able to have an exemption until September the 1st, they also note that they will use best efforts to complete prior to that. I appreciate that. I was at a meeting with Ellis Don, and they were very helpful to try and get me up to speed on what they were proposing and why they felt we shouldn't be concerned. And there was a conversation between two Ellis Don staff that perhaps certainly wasn't scripted and that I wasn't supposed to hear. And that was, yeah, but we think we're going to have this thing done by the end of July. And some looks exchanged, and that was the end of that. My reason for doing this change is that it's partly based on that, it's partly based on how many months residents should be subjected to noise. And I also recognize that in July, if Ellis Don realizes they're not going to be able to complete it by the end of August, they'll be able to come back to council in the August meeting and suggest, request a further extension. Well, sorry, they'll be able to come back in July for the extension into August. So somehow, I have a hope that by the end of July, the demolition portion of this job's going to be done.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our next delegation is Krista Wells Pierce, Vice President, Planning and Support Services, Providence Care, who'll appear before council to speak to Clause D, Report Number 52, from the CAO, again, regarding a request for noise exemption, Ellis Don Corporation, Providence Care Hospital Site.
Good evening, and thank you, your worship, and members of council. As mentioned, my name is Krista Wells Pierce. I'm the Vice President of Planning and Support Services at Providence Care, and I'm here to express our organization's support for the noise exemption that has been requested by Ellis Don. The exemption has been requested to facilitate the completion of the final phase of the Providence Care Hospital project. We very successfully relocated from our Mental Health Services and St. Mary's of Lake Hospital sites just recently, on April 23rd. The final phase of our project is now shifting focus to the demolition of the former MHS site, to enable completion of final landscaping, parking lot construction, exterior access, and the construction of our maintenance garage. I'm not going to restate the specifics of Ellis Don's request, but wish to confirm our organization's support for this exemption, based on the following four reasons. First, our contract. Our contract with Ellis Don includes language that prevents any phase of their work from disrupting hospital operations. This includes disruption that can be caused by noise, vibration, dust, among other things. The requested noise exemption does not negate this contractual obligation, and Providence Care will therefore continue to monitor the noise generated by the proposed extended hours of work. Our patients, clients, and staff have access to over 40 exterior spaces throughout the day and into the evening hours, including 27 screened-in porches and 13 open-air courtyards and patios. We want to ensure that those spaces can be used into the evening hours this spring and summer, and will therefore not allow excessive noise to prevent that from happening. In terms of those spaces being in close proximity to the construction area, some of those spaces are mere 20 yards away from the boundary between the new building and the construction, the demolition site. This includes our palliative care unit, where many folks spend their last few hours with us on earth before their death. Our second reason is related to patient parking. Our current temporary situation is stressful for patients, clients, families, and volunteers. Our final parking condition includes 615 spaces in a combination of patient and staff lots. We're currently operating with a parking shortage of 300 spots, until such time as Ellis Don can complete the demolition of MHS and finalize the permanent parking in November. Our temporary shortage of parking has patients and families raising concerns and questions, as well as many of our physicians. Although we've reserved spots closest to the building for patients, the majority of our outpatient, volunteers, and visitors come to us with mobility challenges and are finding the distance to the main entrance unmanageable. We are running a shuttle from remote locations, including the bus stop at King Street, to the main entrance of the hospital, but the volume is simply too great to meet the needs of everyone who enters our doors. Having all 615 spots available before the winter strikes in November is essential to sustain safe patient access to our vulnerable populations. Third, patient access to exterior space. Two of our inpatient courtyards are not able to be completed until the MHS site is demolished. These landscape outdoor spaces are one of the many therapeutic benefits of our new building, and we've received tremendous positive feedback from the units that have access to them. For the two that don't, it has been very difficult to explain to our patients why they don't have the same outdoor access as other patients in the building. Out of respect for the patients and families who occupy these two units, it is incredibly important that we enable access to those spaces by November. Fourth, and finally, our VOCAC service. Our garage facility cannot be completed until the final lots and vehicular access are in place on our site. Our garage is a freestanding building that will be located in the northeast corner of the property. It will provide remote storage for seasonal items, but most importantly, it will be the home of the hands-on card wash, which is operated by our affirmative business group, the Voices, Opportunities, and Choices Employment Club, or VOCAC, as you may have heard it referred to in the past, which offers employment opportunities for clients as part of their recovery and rehabilitation process. Employment and stable housing are two of the most vital elements in a successful recovery process for our mental health clients. Having the garage completed in November will allow this expanded business opportunity to bring meaning and purpose to the lives of many of our clients.
30 seconds.
In summary, I hope this information has given you a better understanding of why we want to move forward on schedule and complete the final stages of our community's new hospital. Any delay to the completion of this phase of work beyond November will impact patient care and could be interpreted as a failure of what has been an otherwise celebrated and successful journey for Kingston and the region. On behalf of the over 30,000 patients and clients, 800 volunteers, and 1,000 staff who access our hospital on an annual basis, I hope you'll consider our position as you deliberate this exemption request.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Council Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. So if you don't have the extended time, how much longer do you think it'll take to complete the project? You're saying by November. So how much longer?
The issue is really about logistics on the site. We don't have elbow room to give Ellis Don more safe access to that demolition boundary. We have to maintain access to the new building, which pretty much wraps around 60, 70% of the boundary of the MHS site now. They have to, if we don't get the extension, they have to put more manpower within that very confined perimeter for demolition during a 12-hour shift, not necessarily safe, and will complicate our access to the new building in terms of providing pedestrian, cycling, vehicular access in amongst the construction traffic that would be happening in a compressed 12-hour day.
And we want to get two questions, right? Pity. Are you, were you suggesting you're going to be putting patients outside in November?
No. So all of our inpatient units have dedicated access to, on average, a 4,000 to 5,000 square-foot courtyard, so that patients can go out in the open air if they want to. They can do that through level access off their unit, instead of having to go down in the lobby and out the main door to get outside. They also, each unit also has three screened-in porches to allow open-air access, but in a closed environment, screened-in. Patients are able to go out into these spaces 365 days a year. That's what's normal for people. If you're not in hospital, you get to go outside, you get to go on your balcony, or out on your front porch, and enjoy the open air, and it has proven healing benefits. So yes, if a patient chooses to go out on a courtyard in November, December, January, February, 12 months a year, we've built the building to accommodate that access for them. So we don't want the noise to disrupt their enjoyment of that space through the evening hours. And our contract, therefore, allows us to say to Ellis Don, it's too much, you've got to shut it down.
Thank you.
Council Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I certainly understand why you want to get the parking lot finished. One of my questions is, I have quite a few, but I'll keep it at two, is I had been told the hospital will be demolished, and then the mountain, the Providence Mountain, will be put in the basement of the old hospital, and then it's going to be compacted. And this, this is where we get into construction and noise. So the hospital understands that, yes, there'll be a demolition, but there will also be a long period of time with those vibrating, pounding machines that are going to have to compress all that soil for a parking lot. So that noise will be okay?
We've, we've been living in a condition to get the project completed. The MHS site, as I mentioned in my notes, were, in some cases, 20 yards away from the edge of the old building to the edge of the new. It hasn't been, we haven't had to stop construction during all of the ho ramming, everything that was going on to get the new building ready. We never once had to stop construction, and we're confident we're going to be able to move forward, continuing that partnership with Ellis Don. They appreciate what impact their work could have on the experience of care in our building, and they understand that they have to operate their site within the boundaries of our requirement to provide a safe rehabilitative space for our patients.
Thank you for that. Now, of course, there were no patients in the hospital when this was going on. No, there certainly were in the other hospital.
Yes.
Definitely. And then the logistics are still, I did ask Ellis Don this, and I couldn't figure out the answer. Seven to 11 implies that there will be two shifts, 12 hours each, or 14, I'm not sure what the labor, our labor laws permit. Even if they were 14 hours each, we're still talking about two shifts that will be, or four, however many they're going to have, that will be all there together. You know, it's not going to be, a group comes in the morning, and then a group comes in the afternoon. And yet, one of the problems you're saying is that the site is too small, but it sounds like they're already going to have two, four, six, however many shifts they need at that period of time. So I'm confused why that's a reason that you need the extended hours.
So there is always going to be a little bit of overlap in their shifts, yes. It depends on the nature of the trade and the nature of the work and the schedule that they're working on or under. So it would be additional compression of the number of people working in the building and on the site at the same time. So as opposed to having an overlap of shifts that may only be four hours, it could be a full doubling on the, on the site. I think that's the easiest way I can explain it.
Council McLaren.
May I ask, if this extended, if this extension doesn't go through, this noise extension, and it requires more time to do this, will you be losing a lot of money, or is this still contracted and just speedier?
We will be losing, Providence Care would be losing parking revenue. We would probably experience additional sick calls from staff. We would experience protracted complaint processes with families and patients who are already, as I, as I mentioned, concerned with even this temporary seven-month, as we've communicated to the, to the community, experience of having a shortage of parking. So I think indirectly, the costs would be enormous. So I think indirectly, the costs would be enormous for our organization to bear the process of managing the complaint process. We would have incredible loss in parking revenue, which right now is our single option for generating parking revenue for most hospitals actually in the province. Those would be our financial impacts. And the other indirect loss of efficient patient care, the potential for patients to come for an outpatient visit, not be able to park, turn around and leave, that management of their recovery would be protracted and is inappropriate for us.
And if I may also, during the construction phases so far, have, beyond the inconvenience, has there been many complaints from either staff or patients with regards to noise?
So specifically, the adjacency was obviously for our mental health site, so we didn't have any complaints from St. Mary's because they were a little bit removed down the road. No, we had communicated and prepared the staff and prepared the patients. In some cases, on the mental health units, they really enjoyed watching the construction. It provided them a little bit of stimulation, and it wasn't the norm for them to be surrounded with that. So there were actually some benefits to it, and even the site work that has started to prepare for the demolition, we've received equally engaging comments from some of the clients and patients who are able to look at it from outside their windows.
Okay, next on my list is Counsel George.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you very much for your very informative delegation this evening. Two things just leading into my question, Your Worship, that I hear. Number one, health safety issues and time sensitivity, given that, given the climate in which we reside in, and you're dealing primarily with parking lot area here, we have asphalt plants that close up in November normally around here. I guess my question to you, having read the proposed exemption that's before us this evening, is there anything in this proposed exemption that you personally see as prohibiting you from being able to do the work that's necessary to be done between now and September 1st? You know, I looked at this and I certainly think that it's very workable, what staff have put together, but I'd like to hear your opinion on that as well before we move forward.
Thank you. So I think there's a few things in terms of adjusting the hours of work from the proposed 11 back to nine for four days a week. That's eight hours times however many laborers on-site doing the work that you've lost. In addition, eliminating Fridays is another four per week, so you're looking at a 12-hour per week reduction in the exemption. I think the other thing, two things actually, in the proposed amendment that was presented, is the elimination of having any of the reverse signals, the beeping that happens through equipment. That is a Ministry of Labor absolute must. We can't get rid of that. We would have to move forward in all of our activity, and that's just not, that's not a practical adjustment, nor is it legal actually to make that. And the other thing is the proposed condition in restricting the decibel levels to 67. That's the equivalent of sound that's made by a generator as it starts. A lawnmower sits at about 90. So 67 decibels on a construction site is almost eliminating construction activity.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, our third delegation this evening is Roger Healy, co-chair of the Kingston Coalition for Active Transportation, who will appear before council to speak to item one of report number 56 received from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee regarding the cycling lane and waterfront trail extension on Bath Road.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson and members of council. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed Bath Road multi-use trail between Collins Bay Road and Coverdale. That's a stretch of road about 1.7 kilometers or one mile. First, I want to publicly thank, on behalf of KCAT, the city engineers, especially Adam Hardy and Dan Franco, for conceiving this project and seeing it through. I'm sure for them it falls under the category of no good deed goes unpunished. I know lots of city staff are probably familiar with that feeling, but partly the backlash we've experienced, it's about this, it's a term, term backlash was coined in a very good book by Jeanette Siddique Khan, who was a transportation commissioner in New York City, and she experienced quite a bit of backlash to proposals. It's just that we're all reticent to change, and she pretty much dismisses it as that. But it's further compounded, of course, by the fact that most citizens believe they're experts in all matters of planning, roads, parks, et cetera. But in case, in the case of this small stretch of Bath Road, we have a known problem with too much speeding and too many collisions. And not to mention that it is totally inhospitable to pedestrians and all but the most experienced and fearless cyclists. So this project will open access to pedestrians and cyclists and anybody with mobility issues from the west end of Kingston and Collins Bay Road to Lakeside, Henderson Place, West Park, Lemoine Point and the waterfront trail. This project was also identified in the waterfront master plan, which council approved last year, and it is consistent with the planning that is going on with the active transportation master plan right now. And it is also further consistent with the plans to increase traffic safety, and that's the vision zero concept. The road diet, that's part of this project, and diet is certainly one of those four-letter words that can still be mentioned in public but doesn't conjure up pleasant memories for many people. But in this case, I can assure you that it doesn't involve giving up desserts or snacks, nor does it involve eating parts of the road. It refers to a well-known and well-documented conversion of a four-lane undivided highway to a two-lane highway with a third middle lane for turns. And this conversion slows traffic down, it reduces conflicts with turning vehicles, but it has little to no effect on traffic. And it may seem, this may seem counterintuitive, but it, believe me, it works, and you don't have to just trust me, you can trust your city engineers because they wouldn't have proposed this if it wasn't going to work. So the, but the added benefit of a road diet is that it frees up a little bit of room, and in this case, for a much-needed multi-use pathway to encourage and enable Kingstonians and tourists to explore more of Kingston's beautiful waterfront and adjacent businesses and neighborhoods. And finally, I just wanted to remind you that Kingston applied for provincial funding for this project from a $10 million fund, open to municipalities all over Ontario to improve active transportation infrastructure. And there were 151 applications, but only 37 received funding. This was one of them. So that's a 25% success rate. So for Kingston to turn back this funding or even screw around with it in any way, I think that would send the wrong messages to Queens Park.
Thirty seconds.
And just another final thing on that, the province has announced in this recent budget five years' worth of $230 million funding for active transportation funds, and this is perfect timing with the active transportation master plan being involved. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Healy, for your presentation. I was just wondering if you could comment on how the approved plan and for which we were granted funding, how that, if you could just quickly remind us how that hooks up to the overall network, if, from the cyclist's point of view. So if you're a cyclist from another community and you might be interested in Kingston as a cycle tourism destination, how does the multi-use pathway enable that and in what way?
Well, yes, the Ontario government is also rolling forward a tourism plan, so we talk about tourism, bicycle tourism plan. There's also a big promotion of that, and the waterfront trail is, was put together by Waterfront Renewal Trust, I think, and it's about a 30, 25 to 30-year plan, and that group, it goes from Lake Huron, it follows the Great Lakes, Lake Huron area in Ontario. And there have been many people through, following the waterfront trail, and I think they've identified this one little stretch as one of the worst sections of the whole trail. So this trail will, this project will do a lot to alleviate that. But in terms of the overall funding, I know they're promoting the travels, or the tourism travel site, but they're also promoting a commuting infrastructure side, and that's the $230 million, I think it's $50 million in the first year for that. So the project we applied for and got was $10 million fund. Now they've multiplied it by five, and hopefully we'd have a shot at some of that.
Thank you. And my second question, so with this multi-use pathway improvement, it allows province-wide cycle tourists to access us from the west with a lot less risk. It would be, as you were saying earlier, about only the diehards that might use it at present. This would greatly expand accessibility from the west. So you've stated that. The other aspect that I noticed when this came to committee was the fact that because it's on the south side of Bath Road and it hooks up to the Coverdale pathway, which is off-road, it connects up, you don't have to go around, no frills and all the way around on the street at Bay Ridge Drive. So if you could just sort of give us an idea of how that's helpful from a cyclist's point of view.
Yeah, yeah, for a cyclist or even a pedestrian and hikers, families, I think that's the most important notion, is that we're no longer interested in the, well, I know there's roughly 1% are the brave and fearless cyclists who are willing to go out in the current conditions. The trail, I think it would connect certainly all the people who live in the west Kingston area, Collins Bay Road could come down there, all the Westbrook area could come down there by cycling. And I know quite a few people at the open house talked about the commuting trips they do on that stretch. But the access to, the main draw is Lemoine Point, and I think prior to this, residents who live there would only drive to Lemoine Point, but now they can consider extending, having a family hiking or bicycle trip to Lemoine Point.
Thanks.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we have a motion of, oh, before we do that, we have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Yes, Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Yes, I think I've communicated this to the clerk. I'd like council's consent to add a delegation despite the fact we've already got three, so waiving bylaw one, I believe, to add Laura Knapp from the Sidney District Association, who wishes to speak to the motion, the recommendation from staff regarding the interim control bylaw. Yeah, seconded by Counsel Shell.
Okay, do we have that in writing? Okay, we can just put that up on the screen. Okay, so that's a delegation to add Laura Knapp. So that's been moved by Deputy Mayor Stroud, seconded by Counsel Shell, so we will call And that carries. Are there any other delegations to add? Okay, seeing none, then we'll invite Ms. Knapp to come to speak to council with respect to the consideration of the interim control bylaw and alternate options.
Good evening, Your Worship and members of council. Thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. So as you see in front of you, my name is Laura Knapp, although it's actually spelt with one P. And I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the Sidney District Association. I'm speaking in favor of the recommendations in report 17139 on the consideration of an interim control bylaw and alternative options. While there have been many unfortunate developments in the Sidney District over many years, the recent pressure to consider an interim control bylaw galvanized around a huge addition that appeared at 76 Center Street last year. The House's increased scale was a development permitted by right, under bylaws requiring no public process. And yet, I don't think I've heard a single voice in the community speak in favor of the resulting structure. So it was clear at that time that changes to planning regulations in our district needed to be made. We have been assured that the recommended short-term policy adaptations in the report would have prevented the addition at 76 Center Street from being built. These policy adaptations are to immediately remove by-right conversions of single-family dwellings to multi-unit dwellings, to reconsider appropriate outdoor amenity space for one-to-two better-matured properties, and to subject new proposals to the new compatibility policies in the new official plan. Our understanding is that these recommendations will put an end to two large developments that erupt by surprise in our stable neighborhood fabric while permitting acceptable evolutions in our neighborhoods, allowing builders to continue their businesses and property owners to alter their houses to meet their needs, within reason. It is clear that the recommended course of action is a sizable improvement over the status quo and is preferable to the previously proposed interim control bylaw as a means of achieving the desired ends. The recommendations presented by staff are permanent, clear steps in the right direction and achievable in a short timeframe. We feel that staff has arrived at a creative and thoughtful solution that will steer development in a way that is sympathetic with existing neighborhood character. I want to congratulate staff on their hard work on this file, on an effective community consultation process that engaged a large number of people and that seems to have reached a positive solution for the vast majority of stakeholders. Of course, much also hinges on the spirit with which bylaws are implemented, and so I'm encouraged to report that I have heard from members, from our members who have been actively engaged in this issue, that they feel very assured, following the interim control bylaw consultation process, their desire to maintain the quality of life and scale of built form in their neighborhoods is in line with the ambitions of planning staff. This is critically important because citizen engagement in this kind of policy discussion cannot require that we, as citizens, become experts in the complex interplay of different documents that create the conditions for development in our neighborhoods. I think it's important to recognize this gap in expertise that necessarily exists and that must be bridged by trust. The consultation process that was held and that led to this report was effective in building that trust and mutual understanding. With all of this in mind, I urge council, on behalf of the Sidney District Association, to adopt the recommendations of the report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Ms. Knapp, for your appearing this evening. You've mentioned the word trust a couple of times, and I think you've nailed it, that that is a very crucial element to the success of the proposed changes. So I know that you and some other members of SD met with city staff recently. I know because I was invited, but I was working, so I couldn't go. And if you could just sort of elaborate on why you're confident that you have that level of trust with staff at this point.
I wasn't actually at that meeting, which was held on Sunday this weekend. I just, the consultation process, which involved a lot of, involved both public meetings as well as one-on-one consultations with individuals, allowed us to just have a very frank and open conversation about all of the issues, to lay them all out, and when staff came back with their recommendations, they were able to explain to us exactly how the new policies would create the conditions that were desired and... to us exactly how the new policies would create the conditions that were desired and respond to the problems that we had had raised.
Thank you. And would you say that your, the members that did attend the meeting were pleasantly surprised or by the how accessible and and what level the conversation got to with city staff?
I'm not sure I can exactly comment to that. I would say that those of our members who were involved in this particular consultation process have not been involved in civic engagement in this way for a very long time. So a lot of us are reasonably new to these kinds of meetings. So I'd say that we approached those meetings without a lot of baggage and and certainly came with the expectation that and a positive outlook. And we feel that that positive outlook and and spirit was was met and echoed by staff.
Thank you, and thank you for your positive outlook.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, we do have one motion of congratulations this evening, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stroud, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to KCVI students Erin Peterson and Jane Smallman, who represented Canada at the DECA International Career Development Conference, placing first overall in the Financial Literacy Promotion Project category. The financial literacy program developed by Erin and Jane aims to influence Ontario's public and high school math curriculum for years to come. Congratulations. We will call the vote. And that carries. So we have no deferred motions. We'll move on to reports. First report number 52 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, that report number 52 from the Chief Administrative Officer Consent be received and adopted.
So there are a number of clauses A through H. We will separate H for Counselor Bones, Piquinerius. Are there any other separations? Counselor Shell? Separate D. Okay, seeing no other separations, we will first vote on the balance of the items. So first, clause A, award of contract, design, supply, and installation of shelters for Kingston Transit. Clause B, OECM, cooperative purchasing IT services. Clause C, request for noise exemption, St. Lawrence College 50th Anniversary Alumni Day. Clause E, approval of initial study grant application, Brownfields Project Area 1A for the property located at 509 Rito Street. Clause F, approval of initial study grant application, Brownfields Project Area 1A for the property located at 305 to 323 Rito Street. And Clause G, open source software code release. We will call the vote. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, clause D, request for noise exemption, Ellis Don Corporation, Providence Care Hospital Site 752 King Street West. Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I was going to see if anyone else had comments before I started. Just first to ask staff, would just, I believe this has never been requested before, a noise bylaw exemption of this magnitude for construction, is that fair?
Through you, Your Worship, the number of consecutive days is unprecedented, but we do have a few, council has approved a few noise exemptions, one being, both were mentioned in the report, one being the one-month duration downtown at Hotel Dew for their ramp repairs. And that went until midnight Monday through Saturday inclusive for a one-month period in 2007. Another analogous one would be the MTO Highway 401 work that council's approved noise exemptions for. The one that's mentioned in the report is a total of 111 days, which is closely approximates the number of days being requested here, but in that instance, it was spread out over a three-year period.
Thank you very much. I have heard naturally from the neighborhood, because we do have quite a few people who live in this neighborhood, including the fact that we have Lake Ontario Park, an incredibly well-used park in the summer. And I'll just comment that I was surprised when this arrived, the request, because I thought how well the whole hospital had been built. You know, everything seemed to go in time, on time, everything was was going smoothly. And then all of a sudden, we got this big ask from the demolition company. And I think one of the things that's gotten a little confused in here is that the noise exemption actually was through the demolition company. They're the ones that asked till 11 o'clock, but it is sort of morphed into a construction activity till 11 o'clock with some conditions. And I certainly understand why the neighbors are worried. I'm also a little worried about precedent because we are expecting to have a lot happen on this piece of property over the years. There's a very large heating system on the other side of the property that's had work continue on it for the past year. And then we're going to be opening up a lot of pieces of the property over the next few years for development. So I'm worried about precedent. And in light of the neighbors and what I think is a really fair change to the recommendation from the neighborhood, I'd like to bring that forward, and I did present it to staff earlier. It's an amendment, and I'll just, I'll read it. There is a slight change because my seconder is Counselor Neal, and he would like to change it to August 15 instead of August 1. But I'll just read it. It says that Ellis Don Corporation be granted a conditional exemption from the normal 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM prohibition on noise from construction activity under Schedule B of Bylaw Number 20452, bylaw to regulate noise, to allow for construction activity, and this is a change, related solely to demolition, since that is what the original was, that's what the original ask was, at the Providence Care Hospital site between 7:00 PM and 9:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. So that's, the neighborhood is asking that they have their weekends, inclusive between May 3 and August 15, and that's the change. But not including any statutory holidays subject to the following conditions. Number one is the same as staff's report, no hydraulic hammering, truck loading, addition or backing of vehicles or construction equipment that uses audible automatic backup alarms permitted after 7:00. And that actually relates to truck loading. If you're not truck loading, you don't need the backup anyway. Sorry.
So Counselor Shell, what I'll do is I'll just ask you just to read out the rest of the amendment, and then I'll give you another five minutes to speak to it. So is there anything? Okay. So can you just read through the other two points?
Yep. Number two is gone, only inside work be permitted after 9:00. Number three, Ellis Don and its subcontractors will carry out the general practices to reduce noise and vibration as set out in the PDI Priestley Demolition Letter to Ellis Don on March 24. And in addition, will carry out noise monitoring after 7:00 PM to ensure the sound level does not exceed 67 decibels, and I'll expand on that. City staff be directed to conduct regular monitoring of the noise from construction demolition activities to ensure that the conditions of approval are complied with and that the Director of Planning, Building, and Licensing Services is authorized and directed to suspend construction activities creating noise during the hours of 7:00 to 9:00, just the evening, on any day where those conditions are not complied with, with the further authorization and direction that after 3:00, single-day suspensions, that all construction demolition activities creating noise between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 be suspended until such time, if any, that city council determines a noise exemption should be reinstated.
Okay, so at this point, so we have the motion to amend on the floor, moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Neal. So now, Counselor Shell, you have the floor, you can speak to the amendment.
Thank you. As you can tell, a lawyer helped create this. So it's quite specific, but then I think the neighborhood is trying to be quite specific for a very valid reason. This started out as a demolition request. As I say, it's morphed into more of a construction noise request, and we want to bring it back to what the original was, which is demolition. The demolition interior sounds quiet, but when you're demolishing a building, there are no services. So to demolish, you have to use generators to produce the lights and the equipment to do the demolition, and that's noisy. We all know what it's like to have generators, and there will be numerous generators, you can expect, because we've already heard there will be a lot of people working on this as fast as possible. We also want to make sure that there won't be this vibrating construction pounding happening after 7:00, when the new parking lot is created. We also know that when we grant noise bylaw exemptions, such as for Queens, we do ask staff to check or make sure that the neighborhood has a phone number that they can call if they feel that this is getting too much, that it's being gone, that it's gone over the line, because we are talking about one of our major public parks, and we have hundreds of people who live in the neighborhood. The other exemptions that we just heard about tended to be in places where there weren't a lot of people living. And we do have a lot of people in this area, and we will have a lot of families and children during the summer. So I think this is really a very fair compromise from the community to say, yes, we understand that there will be short-term pain to make sure this hospital gets its parking lot and its servicing, because I understand there's servicing has to be done as well, there's a building has to go up. So there's a lot going to happen on this property this summer. And as I say, I was a little surprised that this scheduling wasn't created when the whole site was created, but since there seems to be this this push for speed, this seems to be a good compromise for the hospital. I presume the building can be put up later because we know that the asphalt has to be put in before the plants close. That lately has been getting later and later in the season as our summers and falls get longer. So I don't think there's a panic about the asphalt plants closing too early. So I am very much in favor of what the neighborhood has proposed in this, what I think is very fair compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. So to the amendment, Counselor Neal.
Yes, I totally support the amendment. And I guess I'm a little curious, and I'll ask our staff this question. They requested a 9:00 to 11:00 extension, but saying only inside work would happen during those two hours.
So Counselor Neal, that's a question for the main motion if this fails. That's not speaking to this.
Except that the amendment alters it from 11:00 to 9:00. And I'm, so I'm looking for the rationale. So in order to support that part of the amendment, I'm seeking an answer if I can. So anybody can work internally from 9:00 to 11:00 if they want. They just have some limitations as to the amount of noise they can produce that would go outside the building. Is that accurate?
Mr. Clean.
Through you, Your Worship. In terms of the noise bylaw, the noise bylaw itself is not saying that construction activity cannot occur after a certain hour. It's more specifically saying that noise generated by construction activity is not permitted after a certain hour if it is audible to a person in a residence or premise and that person is bothered by it or disturbed by it. So to your point, if construction activity were to occur indoors after 9:00 PM and not generate noise that was audible to a person in a residence, then that would not be, that would be permitted then. It would not be prohibited under this bylaw.
And the idea of altering the date from September 1 to August 15, that would mean, the way I foresee it, if I can, that would just mean that if Ellis Don isn't completed the work by that date, they'll come to council and ask for, and request an extension of that noise exemption. So I think both of, both ends of this amendment are very, very sensible. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor George.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think the only thing I can agree to on this motion is what the mover mentioned, now was that it was written by a lawyer. It's obviously a lawyer that doesn't understand the works of construction. We heard from presenters this evening, one in particular, that this was an issue related to accessibility for patients, accessibility for the caregivers, and any such delay is going to have an impact on that. And I think we've got to get our morals straight around here as to who it is that we're looking to protect in this instance. There's very few pieces of equipment now that you use that don't have some type of audible backup system on it. You go into a Home Depot, anything they use in there to cart around pieces of wood, any lumber, it's got the backup beeper. Everything has that. So if you don't want that, you might as well shut it down. I think this is just something that's not going to work in favor of supporting them attempting to get this work done in a reasonable amount of time so that those that they serve can have the access that's required, the parking that's required. The mover was talking about tamping or bangers or whatever it was that you referred to. I haven't seen those used in many years when it comes to the construction of roadways or parking lots. They use them in sidewalks, types of things like that. They're tiny, that they need tamping. But anything else, they're doing it layered, it's engineered, and it's done with rollers, which are very quiet and this type of thing. So I can't support this. I think it's gone way too far in one direction, and it favors really shutting down the ability for Ellis Don or any other contractor to get in there and do the work that's needed in order to meet the deadlines. And, you know, we've heard this over and over again for many, many years, that in the climate that we reside in here, we have a very short window of opportunity to get work completed in timely and in, within budget restraints that are given some of the contracts. And if you start eliminating the ability for those contracts to be fulfilled, then it is going to cost more money for those that probably can't afford any more than we could if it was our project. So I guess you have to put yourself in the shoes of those, the patients and the caregivers. Would you want this type of thing put in place to restrict the work from getting done in a timely manner? Or would you like to allow this to happen and see this stretched out for even more months? Because if they don't get it completed in November, when the plants shut, they're going to be back added again next spring. It's going to stretch it out even longer. I think I would rather see a short-term resolve to this and put up with some, some of the potential noise. But I think if we were to impose at least one of the recommendations that I just saw tonight on the added, it would give our staff the ability to safeguard against that. One complaint comes in, they're there to review that complaint, to analyze and see if it's legit or frivolous, and to deal with it. So I'm not going to support this. I think it goes far too in one, too far in one direction, and I'd rather look at what the original recommendation it was before us in the package that we received last week with the potential for a couple of amendments to that. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor McLaren.
Hi, may I ask the delegator, the delegation, Ms. Krista Wells Pierce, what she thinks of this?
No.
No?
No. So you can't ask questions of the delegation, you can ask questions of city staff.
If I may ask, in city staff, in your opinion, is this going to be a serious possibility that this might last until next year if we impose this bylaw?
The second?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. So in our conversations with with Providence Care staff, it's our understanding that So in our conversations with Providence Care staff, it's our understanding that based on any deviations to the recommendation that went forward in the staff report for the exemption, that if the work isn't able to be completed by November, because we don't have the additional time, that it will have to continue into the spring, because once you get into a certain type of weather, asphalt isn't able to be distributed and created, so it will extend the length of the project.
Counselor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. I'm just concerned, as what Counselor Kevin George said, is that we're sending out a message to builders and to contractors that we are not here to do business with people, and that concerns me, and I think the message should be clear that when you come here, you can get your work done, not setting up all these restrictions and saying, no, you can't work until this time, until that time. I think we get the project done, and we get it over the goal line as quick as possible with less pain. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Stroud, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, your worship, and I recognize you.
My first question is with respect to the point at number two about not exceeding 67 decibels. Could I just ask for a comment from staff on that? Is that unreasonably restrictive, or is that? I'm just asking if staff have comment on that one right there.
Thank you, and through you. So 67 decibels, as was indicated in the delegation earlier in the meeting, it isn't actually a high level of noise. It's something that would be relative to the sound of a lawnmower, maybe a really loud hair dryer. So when you're comparing that relative to construction activity, it is fairly restrictive. I believe the decibel reading that is referenced in the amendment. It comes specifically just from the letter that was provided in support of the application and trying to provide a parameter for what the level of noise that would be created each time a generator started up. But that level of noise associated with the generator running for the life of a construction project where there's no electricity that's physically hardwired into the building, and then any other activity on top of that certainly would exceed the 67 decibels on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you. This is not an easy decision for council to make, because we essentially have to do almost a committee work here to try to find the exact compromise that we think will work, that will try to alleviate residents' concerns, at the same time allow the construction work to happen as well. So it's one of those situations, is what it is. Personally, I think that there are valid concerns on both sides of this. I think that there should be a compromise, I'm just not convinced that this is the right one. It seems to me that we have a choice between restricting the hours and extending the timeframe for this work, or compressing it by extending the hours so that the work can get done faster. It seems to me that of the two options, that's the better way to go. So I'm going to vote against this amendment, and if it loses, then I'm going to propose another amendment that will simply alter the timeframe from September 1st to August 1st, to put some pressure on getting that work done as quickly as possible, give them the extended hours to do that, and then they would have to come back to council if they want more time after that. So that would be the alternative. So I just think that this is just not the right compromise. I think we should try again on this, so I won't support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Just a reminder to council that we're speaking to this amendment at this point, and there may be another amendment in the future, we can discuss it at that time, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Counselor Shell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. This is really quite fascinating, isn't it? Because we're talking about construction, but really, we're talking about a big change that's being requested by someone who's constructing a parking lot. Now, it's a hospital, so we've got a lot of emotion involved in it. If it was somebody who's building an apartment building, you know, over on the East End, there wouldn't be any emotion one way, it would come the other. So we've got an emotional element to this. We've got a construction element to this. I will say for doing a parking lot, you need a vibrating roller, and it's a big one, and it vibrates while it rolls, because it has to compact the soil. So Counselor George and I could have a great debate about construction. Fair enough. But we are not construction experts, we are not scheduling experts in terms of what time it takes to build something. We know that a hospital was built on time, on budget. Suddenly, the parking lot is going to require a massive change in our noise bylaw for an exemption. So I don't know the specifics. I actually asked for the schedule from the construction company, just so I could find another construction person, and we could pick it apart, to try to see why they need this huge exemption to our noise bylaw. So I've done my best. We'll see what this council does with it. The 67 decibels did come from a supporter of the amendment request. It was their number, not mine, so that's why it's in there. And generators will be needed for the interior demolition, that's why. If you work inside your house after 7:00, that's fine. It's if you put a couple of generators outside your door and try to work after 7:00, the city will say no. So we have a bylaw for a reason. We have a very important hospital that, you know, we have a lot of emotion for, because it's very important. They've also said they don't want noise disturbing their patients, but we know there's going to be a lot of rock fracturing, a lot of vibrating rollers, a lot of work this summer, so it's going to be a very busy place. I would prefer that it not be busy after 9:00 for the neighborhood. I leave it in your hands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the motion, or call the vote, rather, on the motion to amend. And that loses by a vote of four to eight. Counselor Shell, you still have 30 seconds on the clock to the main motion. There's... Nope. Okay, thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair, please?
I take the chair, and I have a feeling you mentioned an amendment earlier, would you like to introduce one?
Thank you very much. I would be happy to. In writing, Mr. Clerk, if I can give this, so I would propose an amendment to the motion that Clause D, Report 52, be amended by replacing September 1st in the first paragraph with August 1st, if there's a second. Mr. Clerk.
So there's amendment on the floor by his worship, strictly to the time of the permitted exemption. So this is going to be opened on the screen in a moment here, and I believe it'll affect the timeframe that the exemption would allow. We'll just wait for it to come up here, and then we can debate it. Looks like it's seconded by Counselor Turner. And then when it's up, I guess you'll be reading it and speaking to it. Go ahead. I guess it's fairly simple, so maybe you can go by memory.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you. So just to be clear, all this amendment is proposing to do is to replace September 1st with August 1st. This is what I believe is a different attempt at a compromise that essentially tries to put a fire under those that are doing this work to get it done as quickly as possible. So this approach is ripping the Band-Aid off. Let's just get it done. If we need a little bit of extra time to do it, so be it, but then it should be done. What I think would be the worst-case scenario for everyone is if this work had to continue into the fall or into next spring. So for that reason, that's why I would propose this as a compromise, responding to the fact that the residents are concerned. In my view, this would be a more reasonable balance. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I now recognize Counselor George.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question is, is this amendment to the recommendation within the original report or the addendum?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, is with respect to the original recommendation outlined in the agenda.
Thank you. In that case, I can certainly support your amendment, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor George. So yes, if you see on page four of the agenda, Item D, as printed, the change is in the middle of the first clause, near the end of the first clause, it says September 1st. So the between May 3rd and September 1st, 2017, I believe the amendment is saying, to change that from, so it would read between May 3rd and August 1st, 2017. So it's a change of one month shorter in the total timeframe of the exemption. Just to be clear. Anyone else wish to speak to the amendment? Okay, your worship, you have the last word? Okay, I'll call the vote on the amendment as discussed.
And that carries unanimously, and I return the chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the clause now as amended? Okay, seeing none, then we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, moving on to Clause H, Fourth Quarter Operating Budget Report for 2016, we're going to separate the paragraphs. So we'll first call the vote on the first two paragraphs, and then we'll do a separate vote on the third paragraph. So first of all, on paragraph one and two.
One more, please.
And that carries. On paragraph number three, and Counselor Bohm has stepped away. And that carries. Report number 53 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor George, that Report Number 53 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so the first clause is request to close Capital Project North Block Parkade. We'll call Deputy Mayor Stroud.
So I just have a question to staff, basically for clarification, because of the way it's worded, I just want to be clear. So the report says that this account can be closed, because in the current context, the direction from council is not required for this money, and the money can be returned? And what would happen in the future when it comes to the sort of file regarding the construction of a parkade?
CEO Hunt.
Through you, your worship. So yes, this report is simply advising council that the deferred motion that was on the books for about six months is no longer required to be voted on, and this report asks to close that project, at which time council has already provided a million dollars to investigate additional information and report back. At that time, when we report back, which is likely to be within about 12 months, we will then seek a specific budget for whatever it is we propose to council to build.
Thank you. So the real decision on that parking facility will be in approximately 12 months' time when we have that report.
Through you. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on Clause 1. And that carries. So given that Clause 1 is passed, I'm going to rule Clause Number 2 out of order, since it's redundant. Moving on to Clause 3, then, consideration of an interim...
Point of order.
Counselor George.
Sorry. It seems to me that because we closed the one account, doesn't mean we have to allocate it further. We could just put it in reserves. So it's not, it is not, you know? So I'm just asking for you to explain your ruling in effect, because, yes, we closed down the $18 million capital account for, at 5157 Queen, right? So...
So Counselor George, my ruling is that they have exactly the same effect. CEO Hunt?
Yes. By closing this project, any funds that were allocated for the funding of the project or the financing of the project will stay in the reserve funds. And then we'll come back with a specific budget request based on the analysis that the Transportation Department complete.
So then we could vote on it then, right? Okay. Oh, I see. So, okay, I got you. You're saying that if you rule it, it's moot at this point?
It's moot. That's why I'm ruling it out of order.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted, so it's moot.
Thank you. Okay, so Clause 3, consideration of an interim control bylaw and alternative options near campus neighborhoods. Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Couple of questions to staff about the proposal in this change. We're not going to have the interim control bylaw as the proposal, but what are some of the immediate implementations that you are considering in this? How will that help alleviate some of the issues that were raised during the bylaw discussion?
Ms. Egnik.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. The first two immediate steps that we're proposing to move forward with as part of this overall package of recommendations, one would be to remove Section 523 of the bylaw, that is, the conversion section. So what that section of the bylaw does is it allows the conversion of single-family residences to two-unit or to multis. There's different provisions that apply to each, and those are as-of-right permissions. So when I say as-of-right, it means that they are already entitled on the property. So by taking those sections out of the bylaw, anything related to addition of additional dwelling units to a single-family home or converting it would have to go through a public process. So as part of the first draft of the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw, staff had already removed that section of the bylaw. So instead of waiting to go through the final process of public consultation and implementation of that bylaw, which is going to take an extended period of time, we're proposing to enact those changes right away, bring forward a public meeting on that, because we do have to facilitate a public process in June, and then to move forward swiftly after that with a comprehensive report to Planning Committee. So that's recommendation number one. The second recommendation that we propose moving forward with immediately is related to enacting the amenity space provisions. So as part of the overall study that the city did in 2015, we created a new set of amenity space requirements for all multi-residential developments. That study did not look at an application of amenity space requirements to one- and two-family dwellings, and that is a gap that exists in our policy right now. So as part of the recommendation, staff is proposing to work over the month of May to develop a one- and two-family dwelling amenity space requirement that would be looking at something that would be proportional to the overall size of the lot. And what that would do, it would reduce the amount of buildable space that can be accommodated within any residential building lot that allows one- and two-family dwellings. So similar to the conversion policies, we would recommend going forward for a public we would recommend going forward for a public meeting on that in June, and then following shortly after that with a comprehensive report with the amending bylaws.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Just to to sort of clarify, the amenity space would mean that some of these giant homes that have gone on lots would no longer be able to, once we change this amenity space for one- and two-family dwellings, because they won't be able to build so much building on the lot? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mayor Patterson. So that's correct. The amenity space provision that we envision applying to one- and two-family dwellings, what that will help to do is to require an area in the rear yard of the property that will be used for amenity space. So that's not to say that it can be paved for parking. It's actually something that we would propose in addition to the minimum rear yard standard. So some lots in the Sydenham district, for example, some of them are 200 or 300 feet deep. So you can imagine if the zoning right now says the rear yard as a minimum has to be 7.5 meters, and there's no amenity space requirement as there is now, that leads a significant portion of the lot that can be developed for a building envelope. So in effect, by creating an additional standard for the zoning that looks at amenity space, it shrinks the overall building envelope that can be achieved on a lot.
Thank you. That's really encouraging, and I'll be very happy to see these come to planning as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you very much. I just have a couple of questions. I really appreciate the effort that's been made by staff to mitigate and find, I'll call them workarounds, for for the issues that have created problems. I guess my question to you is, and it's me of little faith, I guess, there is such a thing as a good good developer. That doesn't have to be an oxymoron. But we have some people, some developers in town who are very, very litigious. And I'm just curious, which of these workarounds, or which of these policies that that we're endeavoring to implement rather than an interim control bylaw, which of them are OMB appealable?
Ms. Agnew.
Thank you, and through you. So as we work within the Ontario Planning Legislation related to any land use planning policy, any type of policy amendment that you enact or change of that nature is subject to a public process, which has appeal rights associated with it. So each of these policy-related changes that we're proposing to make from a staff perspective, they all have appeal rights associated with them once council makes a decision.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but for a couple for a couple of hundred dollars, somebody who has a lot that they want to develop could indeed appeal the policy to the OMB, bring in a proposal to planning, and we will need to abide by the existing zoning and the existing OP while it works its way through the the appeal process through the OMB.
Mr. Hurdle.
Through you, Ms. Mayor. So that's correct. It they could be appealed, as Director Agnew stated. Now, one of the things we actually didn't include in the report, but that's something that council should be aware of, is that council still has the ability to implement an interim control bylaw should any of these policies, for whatever reason, be appealed and delayed significantly. So it doesn't take away council's ability to move ahead with an interim control bylaw in that situation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I guess, I mean, I I support this because it's trying to address those issues. And I understand we're starting to look at something that I've been begging for for some time, which is not just consideration of units, but consideration of bedrooms for things like amenity space and parking. And I appreciate those those endeavors. I guess time will tell how how successful this can be. I I am happy that some of those unintended consequences, like affordable secondary suites, which I really support, won't be caught up in a in in an interim control bylaw that doesn't intend to stop sensible infilling, but in fact would would potentially have that effect.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just going to stand up here. I'm going to start off by reading, just as background, just to remind folks, staff and council, there was a public meeting on March 1st as a result of previous motion that did have an interim control bylaw attached, and we were debating that whole thing, and there was a public meeting. Remember, we ended up there after a meeting in in January, I believe, and the there was a one of the speakers at the public meeting was a nine-year-old from the neighborhood, from my district. And I've got the text of her speech. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm just going to read a little bit just to remind you of sort of the emotion that's behind the residents of my district and and why they need something done. So this is from nine-year-old Emily McDonald. Why do I want an interim control bylaw passed? Because I like living in Kingston. I can bike to school and bike in my neighborhood without too much traffic. I can walk to school. I know all of my neighbors. We say hello to each other when we see them. We can walk to the lake and the park or the corner store with friends, and it's safe. I can play with my friends outside safely because we know the people in the neighborhood, and everyone watches out for each other. She goes on to say, give a bunch of reasons why I like my family living in Kingston. She also says, why should we stop these monster conversions for the next year, referring to the one-year period of the ICBL? And she gives a few reasons there. And then she ends by saying, we moved here because my parents wanted a better place to raise my sisters and myself without having a long commute. But if we lose our neighborhoods and community feeling, there would be no reason to stay in Kingston. So that's from nine-year-old Emily McDonald. And and I would just to go back to the interim control bylaw, which is not what's being recommended here by staff. And I do I am in favor of what staff has recommended. But just to remind everyone that how that we got here in the first place is that that was my suggestion with Counselor Schell seconding, as a way to deal with the changes that we need, is you put the freeze on a certain type of building. And had we been very specific and focused at the time, we could have had interim control bylaw that did that without too much collateral damage, as it was said. An interim control bylaw is a double-edged sword. So on the one time, on the one side, it freezes undesirable development for a period. But on the other side, it also has a detrimental effect, as was pointed out by many people that were against it. It has a detrimental effect to the building industry, to people that want to convert or add in addition to their home, not for extra housing, but just for themselves, such as Ms. Knapp mentioned earlier. And so that's that's the pros and cons of the interim control bylaw. I still think we could we could use one if we wanted to, and it's certainly our prerogative, if we wished to. But I am actually satisfied that the current proposal from staff, the the five or six different recommendations, they they do they are they do go a long way to getting us to a place where Emily McDonald can maintain that sense of family neighborhood. And I would like to point out that the that the only reason the suggestion is there that these monster home conversions are detrimental to the neighborhood fabric is simply because they're a monoculture. So they're they they enable very, very large home conversions that go up to like 12 or 16 bedrooms are only usable by one demographic. They're not they can't go back to being a family home after after they've been built. And that is sort of the big reason why they should be avoided. The the fabric is changed forever. So that's what Emily McDonald's getting at in her letter, is that the the homes that could be used by tenants that go to Queens or by families, such as the one I live in myself, they go away when we are too permissive with what we allow them to do. And so that's that's exactly what's behind the work that staff has done. The amenity space requirement, combined with the parking requirement calculated by bedroom rather than by unit, shrink the opportunity that an unsympathetic landowner has to plop another house behind a house or, you know, have a 200-foot-long house that you sometimes see.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, thank you. Because they wouldn't. There's just not enough room on a single-family lot to do that, even with the big lots that exist in Sydenham. So thanks again, as was said by my colleagues, for the work that you've done. We're cheering you on as you implement the bylaws, as you have stricter enforcement, as you do all the other things that you've mentioned in this report. And of course, I reserve the right to revisit this issue in the future if I find that my residents are not happy with the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to thank staff for winding their way through the thicket to come up with a, seems to me, quite a clear roadmap to where we can actually do something about these problems that we find in the downtown, particularly the removal of the conversion provisions, the as-of-right aspect. And I think this will be welcomed by most residents throughout the downtown. And there will need to be some kind of public oversight and control of what's of the provisions of the way these things are done, and hopefully it'll all be ameliorated. I just have one small question. When you're talking about you're going to do a growth, identify growth strategy, and which will hopefully lead to guiding future development and zoning changes, the study will not include Williamsville, Princess Street corridor, or the area of the North Kingstown Secondary Plan? I believe I understand why. Okay, things are in flux. Okay. But I presume that doesn't mean that we we can't entertain that after we've had reports and developments on these particular areas. I'm, of course, mostly concerned about the North Kingstown Secondary Plan because it's in my district, so.
Ms. Agnew.
Would that be accurate?
Thank you, and through you. So there's a specific reason for the exclusion of those two areas. The Princess Street corridor, and more specifically in Williamsville, already went through a Main Street study and subject to the development of special policies or secondary plan for that area that were intended to guide growth and are fairly specific in nature. What's under being undertaken over the next year with respect to the North Kingstown area, it's the same process. It's a secondary plan that will essentially develop that secondary level or more specific level of detail related to managing growth in that area, so residential growth included. And we'll look at a number of the same types of things that we're also proposing as part of this recommendation to undertake in what I would refer to as Old City of Kingston proper. So that is the area of the city that is fully built out to a certain extent, but still there's room for some additional intensification and infill within those neighborhoods. And it's the area of the city, one of the only remaining areas of the city, that doesn't have any secondary plan development associated with it. So those specific policies to guide the residential infill projects, the way that we want to see them guided, are lacking, and that's what will be one of the primary focuses of doing that study. And that will include the implementing zoning framework for those policies as well.
Thank you. Just one other question. And that is, it's a very small aspect, but I just want some clarification. It talks about a couple of paragraphs before that part I was talking about. It is including a strategy to upzone certain locations where land assembly is possible to support high-density purpose-built housing. Could you tell us a bit more about what you were thinking about when you wrote that half a sentence? Because clearly, there's a great deal behind it that's not elucidated in.
Thank you, and through you. So as part of doing the the study that's proposed as part of the recommendation, what it'll essentially do is look at more specifically directing the way we want to see the additional residential growth within the areas that are already built up to some extent with existing neighborhoods. So there are some examples. I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head, maybe Aberdeen Street, for example. That's a street where Queens owns a lot of property. There are some streets as well where there's a number of property owners that own contiguous lots, where potentially we could look at land assembly and writing zoning in that area that would allow more than a one- or two-unit dwelling. It would allow more of a multi-residential-style dwelling so that a larger purpose-built residential dwelling could be put in those areas, subject to ensuring that there's good compatibility with the existing built form that's around it. And by virtue of identifying the key opportunities to create zoning for that type of housing, we will be putting restriction on other streets to prevent further intensification within those areas to ensure that we're not compromising further neighborhood stability.
Thank you. I'll just say I'll gladly vote for this.
Okay, so we will call the votes on clause three. Please vote. And that carries. Report number 54 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 54 from the Planning Committee and ask for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Schell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that report number 54 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 332 Young Street. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Report number 55 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
It's my pleasure to provide counsel with report number 55 from the Administrative Policies Committee. Duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that report number 55 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so I do have a request that we deal with these items separately. So item one is the tax write-offs pursuant to the Municipal Act 2001. We will call the vote. And that carries. Item two, 2017 tax ratios and tax capping parameters. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I have just a question for staff, and I apologize for not calling sooner. And it may be the CAO wearing his former hat as City Treasurer that may know the answer to these this question. Item B and C, the new multi-res property class is at half the ratio of the of the existing multi-residential. And there's actually property owners that have questioned me about that. So I'd love to have an answer for them. It's my understanding, and this may be false, that when that happened, it was as an incentive to build more new multi-residential property, and to build that out with a bit of a tax incentive. Is that grandparented in, or is does that have a kind of expiry date?
See you, Hunt.
Through you, Your Worship. Yes, you're correct, Counselor Neal. That was legislation introduced by the province a number of years ago. I'm thinking eight to 10 years ago now, where in new multi-residential property were taxed at tax ratio of one. The former multi-residential ratio was established at amalgamation as part of the fixing of tax ratios by four municipalities across the province. And on that ratio, as you know, we have been moving that downward over the past seven years in accordance with the policy reduction. And this year, it's being reduced to the ratio of two, to coincide with the legislation that's been established by the province for this year. And as the report indicates, if you had a chance to read it, I know it went to committee in detail, but the province will also set some direction for the 2018 and future in detail, but the province will also set some direction for the 2018 and future years with respect to that. But to your point about the new residential property, council here in Kingston adopted that policy in accordance with the regulation from the province. And those new multi-residential buildings that have been built since that time are, have a tax ratio of one, and they have a life of 30 to 35 years, to which, at which time they will then revert back to the ratio for multi-res, depending what it is at the time.
And I guess, given the number of, and the expansion of multi-residential development, is that a policy that we need to revisit? Or is it mandated by the province, or it's recommended by the province and municipalities
Through you, Mr. Mayor. For the 2017 tax year, they've now made the new multi-residential class mandatory at a maximum of tax ratio of one.
Counsel Hutchinson?
Yes, I'd just like to get some more clarity on this because the CAO, remember, we started this downward slope, I think, 2007 or '08 or something? And I thought we put it into place for only a certain number of years, and 10 years or something like that? And so I'm just wondering, first of all, I want to confirm, I believe you just said this, but I want to confirm that we're continuing to do that, to move the multi-residential property class down to equality with the residential. But I'm wondering about how much is going down per budget year, and how many years before we get there?
Ms. Egnan?
Through you, your worship. So the rate that's being set in 2017 tax ratios with this recommendation is a ratio of two for multi-residential. The strategy that council adopted seven years ago would have brought it to 2.1 in 2017. So we were very, very close to what the province has now set it at. So there will be no further reduction at this point in time on the basis of that policy. So we've mitigated that change over the seven years. However, we do know that the province has indicated that for the 2018 year and subsequent years, they may very well set it at something other than the two that they've set it at this year.
So I get from that that the province has sort of taken this process over? I think originally they allowed municipalities to move it down if they wanted to. Now they've set it, and we can't do it anymore?
So the reason, Mr. Mayor, that they have set it is that the assessment for multi-residential has been established for the 2000, in 2016, for the four-year period ending 2020. The overall assessment has increased fairly significantly relative to other classes, to which the province took the step to introduce the tax ratio at two. They will further analyze that over the course of the coming months, and they will inform us probably within about 10 months as to what they recommend for future years. That doesn't mean that the city could not further change that ratio. However, the only direction that the city could move it would be down as opposed to back up, unless, of course, you got a ministerial order, which is possible under the legislation.
Thank you. I'll just say that it's simply a matter of fairness that people in multi-residential property should not pay a ratio higher than the residential homeowner. It's one of the reasons why, seven years ago, the province, or little before that, I think, allowed that. And believe it or not, I've had calls about this, not now, but previously, and a little old lady living in an apartment on Village Drive phoned me last year, I think, and said, "When is this going to happen?" And when I explained to her how glacially slow this process is being, because no one wants to put too much weight on the residential class, which has been benefiting from this disparity forever, she said she thought she might be dead before this happened. So I just want people to know that it is an important issue, and it's only a matter of simple fairness that we equitize these rates at some time in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote on clause two. And that carries. Report number 56 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Thanks, your worship. I rise to submit report number 56, moved and seconded, and ask for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Cannon, that report number 56 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There are four items. Would anyone like anything separated? Counsel O'Sannick?
Clause number one, please.
Okay, so clause number one's been separated. So we'll do number one, and then we will do two, three, and four together. Counsel O'Sannick?
Thank you, your worship. I support the multi-use pathway along the water side. For years, residents have asked for safe bike lanes so that they can ride along Bath Road. This project will give them a safe route. For years, residents have asked for a sidewalk along Bath Road, and again, this project will give them a paved pathway. Is there a safety problem? Well, to answer that question, through you, your worship, I just wondered if engineering has any information on the speeds of the cars that have been seen around Bath Road, around the bend in this area?
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do have some speed information through that corridor of Bath Road, and it certainly does indicate a higher speed than what is the posted speed limit. In fact, the 85th percentile speed along the section that has a 60-kilometer-hour speed limit is about over 80 kilometers an hour. For the section that is posted 50 kilometers an hour, we have an average speed of about 60 kilometers an hour.
Great, thank you. It is also pitch black along Bath Road at nighttime because there's no streetlights. An added bonus of this project is that streetlights will be added from George's Marine to the Bay Ridge Overpass, where there's currently no streetlights at all. Then between George's Marine and the homes along Bath Road and Collins Bay, solar lights are going to be added along the south side to provide lighting around the bend. So there's lots of benefits. The Ministry of Transportation right now is working on a project to build bike lanes from Adolphus Town to Collins Bay beginning this summer. This project tonight will link those new bike lanes created by MTO to the city's existing bike lanes over on Bay Ridge Drive through Coverdale Drive, providing that important link that Mr. Healy talked about tonight for the Ontario Waterfront Trail Network. Collins Bay is a very important area to connect to this waterfront trail. So I am a driver, and I live right off of Bath Road. This project directly affects me as much as all the other drivers that take that Collins Bay Road and Bath Road intersection every day. I have a vested interest in this because it's my route to work, and it has been for the last 18 years that I've lived here in Collins Bay. I've asked staff many questions about traffic flows. Those have been my main concern, as well as what I think this council has seen from the emails and the feedback on social media, all about the traffic flows. So with that concern in mind regarding traffic flows, I'd like to propose, you know, a change to the project in that although we will keep the network, the multi-use pathway the same, that on the north side, we keep two westbound lanes going as they are today. So I will give you the wording of my amendment, and then if there's, well, we do have a secondary, and then we have a diagram to show that, how that exactly would look like.
Okay, so Counsel O'Sannick, I'll just ask you just to pause there. Can we get that motion to amend? So Counsel O'Sannick, you can read it and then speak to it.
All right, so moved by myself and seconded by Mayor Patterson, that clause one of report number 58, received from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee, be amended by revising paragraph one to read as follows. That council hereby approves a preferred design for the Bath Road Cycling and Waterfront Trail project, which requires elimination of one motor vehicle lane in the eastbound direction and the maintenance of two motor vehicle lanes in the westbound direction on Bath Road between the curve of Collins Bay Road through to the Bay Ridge Drive Overpass to install a concrete median with flexible bollards in order to create a multi-use pathway, and, and then everything else stays the same. So that is the amendment. And then, if it's possible to have the diagram, right, so, oh yeah, it's not going to reach way over there. I thought maybe it would be up here. Anyway, so the blue in the diagram, can we, oh, really? Should I try it with the cat laser toy? All right, thank you.
I'm in the driver's seat.
Okay, so, over on the left, that is westbound, so that's to the west, so that's Amherst View. Over on the right is eastbound, so that's going towards the city, and the lake is right here. So we will have, still with this amendment, the waterfront, like the multi-use pathway is still right along the water in blue. That does not change. We still have the funding, you know, to build this pathway. All of the money basically goes into the pathway. Then, heading eastbound, we do have like the one lane of traffic on the other side of the Collins Bay traffic, Collins Bay Road traffic light, and Collins Bay Road comes down here, and the traffic going through to the city is in the right-hand lane. For this left-hand lane, that is a dedicated left-hand turn lane to get into the businesses that are along here. So what the change in the amendment is doing is, for westbound traffic, coming back home at the end of the day, is that it stays as two lanes. What was seen at Infrastructure Transportation Committee was that the westbound traffic would merge into one lane. This amendment is keeping both lanes as full lanes heading westbound over towards Collins Bay Road, and that is the amendment.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion to amend on the floor. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to it? To the amendment only, please. First on my list is Counsel Neal.
Thank you. Just a question for our engineers, for staff. How do you see the functionality of this amendment compared to the original recommendation?
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The option that's being discussed right now would appear to be a feasible alternative to what was discussed at committee. The change that would be required in order to accommodate this, in order to put the two westbound lanes into effect, would be the elimination of the westbound dedicated cycle lane. That would enable, that plus some narrowing of the through lanes, would create enough real estate in order to put back that westbound through lane. So that would be the change that would be required in order to see this option exist. But again, we would see these, this as being a feasible alternative to what was offered at the committee.
Okay. Next on my list is Counsel Boone.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I just want to state that I have heard from many residents over this, and I'm sure most of us have, and it seemed to be one of those things where the proposal went out to the media, and then all of a sudden there was the great outcry. And essentially with that, I think that this is a very fair compromise. It basically allows the multi-use pathway, and having grown up around that area as well, I know the speeds on Bath Road there can get quite in excess of, or sorry, in excess of what the posted speeds are, and there is no good connectivity there for somebody that's cycling or walking. So the south, the south multi-use pathway is definitely going to be a benefit. Being able to keep the lanes going westbound is also going to be a benefit. And I think this is basically a balancing act between the need to connect our city with active transportation, and also the realization that, you know, there is going to be a vast majority of cars that are still going to use that area as well. So I think it'll also have a slight calming effect on the speed, while at the same time creating that active transportation connectivity. So I'm more than happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Cannon?
Thank you, and through you. I have also received a lot of kind of blowback after we kind of went forward at the committee level with this. And I do think this has happened a couple times on council where we give staff direction and we know we want certain things as a council. One of them was the solar farms. I was, when we had that, when we're approving various solar projects, we had a couple that we didn't vote through, which was kind of unique because you wouldn't expect that we would vote down a solar project. But, so, but we know we want certain things, we know we want solar energy, but we don't necessarily know exactly what we want it to look like. This is kind of one of those situations where we know we wanted to increase the connectivity of the city with various means of transportation, we want to have, you know, we want to green the city, we want to do all these different things, but we weren't exactly sure on how it should look. So I think that this is, this is kind of a nice change because I know I had met with a lot of different members of the community who actually, I drove out to this site during rush hour and sat with them and watched traffic and all these other things. And I think that this is like, this is a really nice compromise that accommodates everybody. And I'd like to thank Counsel O'Sannick for kind of taking a bit of a lead on this because we did receive a lot of community feedback, and I think that this is a very good compromise.
Thank you. Next on my list was Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, good work, Counsel O'Sannick, working with various people you needed to work to to get this compromise in place. What I heard from the Director of Engineering was that we're sacrificing the westbound cycle lane, which is on the opposite side of the road from the multi-use pathway, which is actually a two-way pathway. Obviously, just like with a two-way street, if you've got bikes coming both directions, you've got to be careful, but you cannot accommodate two lanes going in opposite directions on the multi-use pathway, because I believe, just as with KMP Trail, three meters is sufficient for that. And the, so that we're sacrificing this other cycle lane. So that's a great idea. I just want to point out, though, that if, part of the, when it came to committee, we talked about the speed of traffic and the changes, and Mr. Healy talked about the road diet. So all these things, we do have, as Counsel Cannon said, a vision and strategic priorities as council, and we agree that different modes of travel is one of those things, and multi-use pathway is a great way to do that, but also the Vision Zero movement and the speed of traffic. So we've heard from engineering that this is an area that because of the four lanes and because of how wide it is, it inadvertently leads to speeding, because, because there's no reason to slow down. And so by going, by merging two lanes, we were having the secondary effect of actually reducing the speed of traffic. And any time that you can do that, you're increasing safety and you're saving lives. So the four lanes here doesn't really do that, the two lanes on the westbound doesn't really do that in a general sense. But however, it does lead to a very busy intersection at Collins Bay Road, which will back up when the light is red. So that in itself will act as a slowing down, I'm hoping, a slowing effect on traffic going westbound. And by maintaining the narrowing eastbound, we're actually having that common effect. So if it's possible for it to be a win-win, it should be. Maybe I should ask engineering staff's opinion on that, if the, if there would be, if we're losing some of that traffic calming effect with this iteration of, with this option as opposed to what staff had originally proposed.
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments. Number one is that the safety provisions from an active transportation perspective are still are still well-protected even with this alternate design because we have a segregated multi-use pathway. So cyclists, pedestrians, anybody who's using active forms of transportation in that multi-use path are, are going to be doing that in a, in a separated facility with a median island to act as a barrier against the vehicular traffic. The other point that I mentioned, uh, in order to achieve this alternate design would be a narrowing of the traffic lanes. There is some literature that would suggest that a narrowing of traffic lanes is also an opportunity to try to achieve some lower vehicular speeds. Uh, so I think for those two reasons, we see some, uh, some benefits from, uh, from a traffic calming perspective through the corridor.
That's great to hear. That's basically what I wanted to have addressed, uh, in open session, openly asking that question. The, uh, the compromise is a good one. The, I, it's great, it's, it's, I was surprised that we could come to a compromise on already produced engineering drawings, but, uh, so my, my compliments, and I will be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel George.
Thank you. Through your worship to staff, um, well, actually, first I'll comment and say that I, I think I can support this, uh, actually, I wasn't coming here this evening prepared to support what was originally recommended, but I do have a question for staff. Given the potential for continued traffic congestion here, uh, do we have the ability with the traffic lights that are both east, east and west of this area, that if we had to deal with timing more so rather than dealing with weighted intersections, we have that ability to do that? I know Mr. Van Buren has listened to me complain about, uh, Gardner's Road and the ability to funnel traffic into the city in the morning and funnel the traffic out, uh, using timed lights potentially versus weighted intersections because that's what's causing, well, you get one vehicle coming out and shutting everything down for thirty to forty seconds. I'm wondering if that ability exists with the intersections to the east and the west of this, if we, over time, recognize that it's becoming a hazard due to traffic buildup, if we can do that.
Mr. Van Buren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the, uh, analysis work that we've done for this project, we've been able to look at traffic simulations through the entire corridor. Um, that work has also allowed us to look at some of the traffic timing, uh, for the, for the adjacent intersections at both ends, and to be able to make some, uh, some suggested traffic signal timings so that we can try to adjust for some of the anticipated, um, vehicular delays that may be experienced as we do the lane reductions. Um, up and over that, we will certainly have a period where we will monitor, uh, post-insulation of the bikeway, and if there's any necessity for any additional, uh, traffic signal timing adjustments, we can make it at that point in time as well.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Um, thank you for the new rendition. I appreciate the compromise. I, I think it's a good, good suggestion, and I appreciate your time and work on this. Um, I have a question, uh, concerning, uh, emergency vehicles and how they would operate in this. Would they go down the center of the laneway if there was an accident or something?
Mr. Van Buren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think we would anticipate the operation of, of that section of Bath Road if there was a need for emergency vehicles to pass through that area to operate, much like any other road, uh, in the city would, where we'd anticipate vehicular traffic that would pull off to, to the side, um, as close to either the shoulder or the, the curb line as they could, creating enough space for emergency vehicles to pass through the center.
Okay, thank you. I have another question as well. In terms of timing and lights and stuff, I, I noticed that the traffic is going westbound. Um, there's two lanes of traffic going westbound and one going eastbound. Now, what about in the morning? Would we have the ability in the future to possibly, I know in Toronto, they can change lanes, I think it's Jarvis Street, where they have lights to facilitate that? Like, let's say there was a lot of traffic going in in the morning, right? So you'd want an extra lane to go in the morning and then two lanes in the evening?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There, um, there is certainly balanced volumes in both in east and the westbound direction through the course of the day. However, there is a, there is a dominant flow direction through the morning and the afternoon peaks. Um, the idea of using a contra-flow lane, um, yeah, we see that happening in certain communities. We haven't really had an opportunity to explore that in this environment, um, so I don't think at this point in time we'd be able to offer too much more comment in that regard.
Okay, and sorry, just to ask you one more question about this, um, is just in the morning, do you perceive there would be a slower time going in because of the one lane, possibly?
Mr. Van Buren.
With the flow direction in the eastbound direction in the morning, um, I don't think we're anticipating that there is going to be a, uh, an increased level of congestion through the corridor. Reason being is that there is currently the existing one lane that's coming in along Bath Road from Amherstview. Uh, we certainly have any southbound, uh, vehicles that are coming along Collins Bay that would also be, uh, potentially turning left to go eastbound onto Bath Road. Um, but again, that, that, we wouldn't see that as contributing to any excess in terms of congestion or, or a delay through that corridor in the eastbound direction during the morning.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else who wishes to speak? Counsel Ossanic?
I'll just finish off by saying that, thank you, your worship, that, um, this has been a long process. The first public meeting was at the end of October. Here we are now at the beginning of May. Thanks very much to staff for, um, all the changes and, uh, receiving the public comment. Um, construction will start in July and hopefully finish, um, by November, and then the city will reap the rewards of this next year when, um, the pathway is all good for spring and all the cyclists are out on a beautiful day and everyone can walk, you know, over to Lemoine Point. So next summer should be really, um, exciting, and this summer is construction. Thank you.
Fun, thank you. Uh, so with that, we will call, uh, the vote on the motion to amend. Please vote. Uh, and that carries. On the clause then as amended, please vote. And that carries by vote of eleven to one. Okay, um, clause two is extending maximum length of stay and occupancy for the Chown and Hanson parking structures. Clause three, contractor permit parking residential areas. Clause four, on-street residential parking program implementation for Inner Harbor and Williamsville. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report number fifty-seven from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
Hello, I'm happy to present, uh, report number fifty-seven from Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Holland, that report number fifty-seven received from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there is just the, or, sorry, there are two, uh, two items. Um, number one, appointment of the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee members to the Built Environment Working Group. Um, and number two, appointment of Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee members to the Awareness and Education Working Group. We will call the vote. And that carries. Uh, nothing from committee of the whole. We have no information reports, no information reports, members of council. We do have, uh, one motion under miscellaneous business, uh, that as requested by the Brain Tumor Foundation of Canada, council proclaimed May twenty-seventeen as Brain Tumor Awareness Month in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Shell. Please vote. And that carries. Uh, on to new motions. Uh, for the first motion, I will pass it to the deputy mayor, unless, the deputy mayor's heading out of council chambers. Thank you.
I guess I, I'm going to be reading the motion, so I better, uh, put off my bathroom break. Yes, that's right. Deputy, uh, deputy mayor has to read the mayor's motion. So, uh, new motion number one, that's where we are, I believe, uh, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Holland, whereas fostering open government and enhancing engagement across the community paired with committee and council meetings has increased the demand and workload of councillors in the City of Kingston, and whereas a proactive conversation about this increasing demand and workload of the mayor and councillors should include a review of options for full-time positions, and whereas a citizen committee to review council remuneration be created with a mandate to review the current compensation paid to the mayor and members of council, and whereas the membership of this committee will be comprised of a wide range of perspectives, including a member of the business community, a member of the healthcare community, a member of the nonprofit sector, a member of the educational community, a member of the organized labor community, two community members, and one former member of council elected after two thousand and six. And whereas the citizen committee to review council remuneration would be well-suited to review and make recommendations based on the current demand and workload of the mayor and councillors, therefore be it resolved that the citizen mandate of the committee to review council remuneration include the review of the options for moving from part-time to full-time mayor and councillors in the City of Kingston, together with other options to ease workload. And you have the floor.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Uh, so, currently, we have the youngest council ever to lead the City of Kingston, and that has, uh, brought forward an interesting, uh, discussion and this interesting challenge, and that is that there are a number people around this table that, uh, are balancing, whether it's young families, full-time jobs, uh, other, other factors that make, uh, the workload an issue. And this is, as I said when I was on council, it's one whopper of a part-time job. Uh, it is. There's an enormous amount of work that's involved, and I think that, uh, it's good to have a discussion about are there ways that we can operate more efficiently as council? And so those, those options can be across an entire spectrum, and I think I want to emphasize that this motion is very much geared to allowing for that full discussion. Uh, everything from, uh, recommendations on fewer committees to try to reduce workload, to administrative support, to try to manage workload, to even moving to, uh, perhaps full-time councillors and perhaps a fewer number of them. So, uh, it could be any or all of those things, and short-term recommendations, long-term recommendations. I think that the key is that that shouldn't be our decision here as council, that that really is best left to a citizens committee that is already going to be struck in the coming months to examine council remuneration. So while the citizens committee is already looking at that issue, why not give them the mandate to look at some of these other issues as well? We're basically just going to throw the question to them and see what comes reported, uh, reports back. Uh, I think that there's a balance. I think, on the one hand, it should be what works best for councillors, but also what works best for the community. So let the citizens committee have that discussion, and then we'll see what they come back with. So the only thing that I would say at this point is I would try to encourage council at this point not to get into, uh, the, the weeds or the details on this. Um, there are many other, many potential options and ideas, but I don't think we need to explore all of these right now. That's why the last action clause, uh, does specifically mention the possibility of moving to, from part-time to full-time mayor and councillors, but also other options to ease workload. So it's basically meant to keep the door wide open, and I'm sure that the citizens committee will be open to any ideas and thoughts that we can have a look at at that point. So, uh, at this point, um, having spoken to many of you individually over the last two years, uh, I'm convinced that there is a strong appetite around this table to at least have this discussion. So that's why I decided to bring this motion forward, so I am asking council to, uh, to approve this motion, to pass it so that we can have that discussion, and we'll see where it goes. And I will say off the bat that I am, uh, I'm open to anything. I don't necessarily think that there's necessarily one option that is better than another. I think it's good to have that full analysis and discussion, and then we'll, uh, we'll take from there. So, uh, with that, uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You, thank you, your worship. Uh, I recognize Counsel Holland and then Counsel Neal.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Uh, so I guess really what I wanted to emphasize in, in motivating this motion is, um, again, not, as, uh, his worship has identified, that we as a council can come up with some perfect option. We know our particular realities at this moment in time, and we are experts about our lives, for sure. Uh, I do think, however, that there is something that we should consider, um, which is something that I care passionately about, which is that there are barriers to entry and that we should be trying to expand the diversity of this council. And political parties and other jurisdictions across the province, across the country, have proactive ways of doing that. They, uh, and lots of public sector organizations have equity policies and diversity policies. And what we have at our disposal at the moment is trying to find a way to navigate a demanding political career with all the other aspects of our lives that we need to fulfill, and those lives and circumstances are, can be very different. So, for example, um, I have had, as many of you know, well, maybe you don't know about all of them, but I've had five jobs in the past three years since I've been on council. And the reason for that is perhaps I have a job retention issue, but also, it's been difficult to try to find the appropriate combination, an entry-level job where you can say to the employer, "By the way, I need every second Tuesday evening, I need at least every second Thursday evening, every fourth Wednesday, every Monday, blah, blah, blah." You can't say that in a job interview, you can't say that when you start in an entry-level position. So for someone at an early stage of their career, the...
I'm, I'm sorry, just, just a note to the, that, um, um, only councillors are permitted to speak, please. Thanks.
Okay, so anyway, my point on this is just to say that for people who have, who are starting out in their career, therefore fairly young, um, there are fewer options in terms of careers to combine with a municipal councillor position. Uh, so, while I feel very privileged in that I have had all these various opportunities, it has opened my eyes to the fact that there are some jobs, there are some people, um, who, you know, for example, work retail or work in the hospitality industry. You can't ask for evenings and, and, you know, excessive times off if you're in that type of position. So the current situation benefits those who are older, more advanced stages in their career, um, who have some flexibility, who have perhaps even a private office that they can be in when they're returning phone calls that constituents make, um, instead of sort of hiding in the closet when your boss is nearby. Or they're not the primary caregiver or managing all of the aspects of a family life at one time as well. And by that I mean married or partnered. Again, in my own situation, I have a daughter, I care for her part-time, but full-time when I have her. And I would say that if I've been struggling with all the benefits and privileges that I've had, that I find, I find it very difficult to imagine how someone in a more difficult financial position would, would manage this. And I really think we need to hear from those voices. I think we can all agree, when we look around this table, that we don't really have diversity on this council, and so for that reason, I would like to see us explore all the options that would eliminate the barriers to entry into this very important position, which has to do with representation, and I think that this is a step forward. So I hope you'll support it.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counsel Neal.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I did have an opportunity to talk to both the mover and the seconder today about this, and, um, I understand from that conversation that... And I understand from that conversation that the intention of this was to look at all options. And yet, when I read it, the second whereas clause says, "including a review of options for full-time positions," and the final, the final resolve clause, "include the review of the options from part-time to full-time." So if I were on a steering committee and I read that motion, my assumption would be that I was being asked to find a way to make city council a full-time job. And I understand from discussion with the mayor and with the seconder of the motion, councillor Holland, that that wasn't the intent. And so I've put some amendments, including, and I'll explain why I've amended one of or two of the whereas clauses, why they logically need to have a little tweak done to them as well. So if, is that the, if you could put up the motion as my amendment, if you would? All that I've basically done is remove when it's specifically speaking to full-time and talking about options plurally. So the first whereas clause would read, "whereas a proactive conversation about this increasing demand and workload of the mayor and district councillors should include a review of all options, including full-time or part-time positions." So all I'm attempting to do is not have it directing to just one option. Paragraph five, I would amend so that it reads, "whereas the citizens committee to review council remuneration would be well-suited to review and make recommendations based on the current demand and workload of the mayor and district councillors, taking into account best practices in other municipalities." I had an opportunity to, and I'll speak to some calls I made to some other communities, and there are communities that have struggled with this as well. And I'd like to make sure that we aren't creating policy in a vacuum. And my final amendment is the same thing as trying to not lean towards one option. Therefore be it resolved, the mandate of the committee to review council remuneration include all options from part-time to full-time for mayor and district councillors in the city of Kingston, together with other options to ease workload. So the only thing that I'm adding there is recognition that part-time should still be a consideration, that we shouldn't be directing the committee, the citizens committee, towards one of the two options, which is what it appears to be when I first read it and when other people first I asked to read it. Cold suggested that, well, it sure seems to be leaning to full-time. And I think, I think we need to definitely consider that, but...
Point of order.
...consider other things as well.
A point of order, councillor Holland?
So I have, I did have a conversation with councillor, with deputy, with councillor Neil, however, I don't, I didn't agree to second this motion, so I would like to strike that.
Okay, so councillor Neil, you've lost your seconder for this particular amendment, but...
I'm, I'm sorry.
But you still have the ability to find a seconder.
Could I? I shared this with you earlier, and you sent me an email saying it looks good, I'll second it.
Okay, guys, it's fine. We keep our eye on the ball here. Councillor Neil would like to amend the motion with this wording, and he needs a seconder for us to proceed. So I'm looking for someone to raise their hand to second this so that we can proceed. Okay, so seconded by councillor McLaren. And so on the amendment only, councillor Neil, you have 90 seconds remaining. Clock is ticking.
Thank you. So that's my rationale for this, and I'm hoping that the amendment will indeed pass.
Okay, thank you. So this is on the amendment only, as you see there. Just point out procedurally, as you all know, whereas clauses do not provide direction to staff, so the, the exact wording of the whereas clauses do, either way, don't make any difference to the direction we give staff. The change would be in the wording of the therefore be resolved clause, and you'll have to compare that wording to the original wording to find the differences, because it's not spelled out. So to the amendment only, who would like to speak? Seeing none, yes, your worship, you may speak.
Thank you. I don't, I guess this is sort of an eye, the beholder, what you would think. I think that when we, I was crafting this, it was with the understanding everyone knows that right now all these positions are part-time, so I think that that's why it says an option to move to full-time. If there's a desire among council to make that explicit, I think that that's fine in the whereas clauses. I don't really see much of a difference in the final action clause. So I wouldn't really say that there's any real change to this. I suppose it comes down to whatever you think reads better. So with that, I have nothing else to add. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, so now, next on my list is councillor Bohm. There were, to the amendment only, so this is the wording that you see there in the be it resolved clause is what we're discussing at this point. Yes?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And through you, I'm going to vote against the amendment, simply because it just comes down to a wordsmithing, and I think this is something where we just end up dragging things out for a simple and/or-but-where clause or wording, and it just comes down to an opinion, because I could say I read this one, and in my mind, maybe it makes me think it's more of a direction one way or the other. So we're literally talking semantics at this point. So I don't want to encourage this type of thing in the future. It's getting late, and we'll have things to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for us to speak to the amendment? So it's moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren. You see it there. I'll call the vote on the amendment. Just want to point out that it's councillor Neil that I'm the current deputy mayor, just want to point that out. Small detail, again, a wordsmithing detail. And that passes seven to five. So we're back to the amendment, the motion as amended. So the final clause is, now reads what the amendment read. So as amended, you see it there, so that's the amended, very good work, staff, that's the amended version. So now we're back to the speakers' list, and after councillor Neil, I had councillor
Do I have some time remaining, since most of that was discussing the amendment?
I'll give you another 90 seconds.
Thank you. I just want to point out that I did have an opportunity to make some calls today, and there are other committees, other municipalities that are going through a similar kind of task force review. But I would want to point out London as an example. They have a council of 15. Yes, they're larger than us, but they have a council of 15 with 14 wards. And what their base salary is more than ours, not a great deal more, but they also get paid for external committees and boards. So, but, but the interesting thing is, they have, for support staff, they have four administrative assistants. So each assistant is responsible to work with three councillors. They have one executive assistant who works with two councillors and supervises the others. So, so they have dedicated staff, they have offices, they have a switchboard, so when you call in...
15 seconds.
When you call in, you actually can make an appointment. Right now, we have none of those support systems. So I'm glad that the mayor's motion recognized other options to ease workload, such as those.
Thank you. And so on the amended motion, as you see there, councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Question for staff. I know we do regularly have a citizen committee created. Who will be the sort of lead staff help for the citizen committee, please?
Through your worship, that'll be me.
Good, thank you. I did speak just off the cuff to the previous citizen committee chair, many years ago, actually, when we were just chatting, and I think before the election, and he said, "You know, I wish we'd have been able to really talk about what councillors do, because their basic discussion had been around the fact that what councillors are required to do is come to council twice a month and vote." That's basically our job on paper and what we're paid for. And the other committees that we go to are all voluntary. So he really thought that they weren't doing a full, a full job of looking at what councillors are actually asked to do, what, as opposed to what councillors are required to do, and how we work that out, because we have to populate committees. But we could all say no, or it's part of our job as, you know, dutiful citizens, doing a public service commitment to our city. So I had, I just heard it and took it in, and then when I saw what a great council we got this time around, was voted in, and saw how particularly young and full of children we are in this council, and I thought about, I think councillor O'Sannick was our only last time, certainly mine were long gone. I was really thrilled at the new council, but I also knew what it was going to mean for some people. And I'm very much keen on diversity and being open to the community, that anyone can run for council without hindrance. And so I'm really keen that this committee this time will be asked to look at everything. And all options means childcare, paying attention to what it means to run for council and what it might mean for your life. In terms of full-time job, if you go to a part-time job, what does that mean for your ability to work and be a councillor, or treat it as basically a full-time job? I know in, in an outside county on a committee I'm on, one of the councillors said, "Oh, you guys are so lucky to have such a broad range of people on your council." Most of us are all retired guys, because that's who can run in many areas realistically, people who already have a good pension. So I'm very pleased at this motion, and I think the citizen committee will be very pleased to have such a direct ability to look at what councillors do and what we expect of them. So I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you. Through you, one question to the clerk. For the citizens committee, will the, will it go through nominations committee, or will the citizens committee be appointed?
Through your worship, to maintain that arm's-length relationship, everything will work through the committee. It will not go through the nominations committee or council. Actually, I shouldn't say that. It will come to council only for ratification, per se. So council won't be voting on those people that will be impacting on what happens with their, with their future in career job.
Thanks for that answer. And overall, for the motion, I have to go against the grain. I don't like this motion, because I don't agree with having full-time councillors. Only three Ontario cities right now have full-time councillors, Toronto, Ottawa, and Hamilton, and they're the three largest in the province. Yes, we know that London is going through a debate right now, but they're three times the size of Kingston. We're too small of a city to consider full-time. It's not our time yet. I firmly believe that, and I don't want the citizens committee to be bogged down on the debate of full-time versus part-time. I don't, I don't think that's a good use of their time, and it might take longer than the next election to have a full debate on that. I think that we just got unnecessarily scared of the resignation of councillor Allen, right? Like, when's the last time that someone has resigned from council? I think we heard during all of that, it was back in 1992 or so, you know, like 25, like many years ago. I've been on council, this is like my third time, third term, and this is the first time that it's arisen. So it could, it could arise again at any time, and it's just because this is just, you know, like, if we go full-time, it's only for four years. That's the only employment you're going to have that's guaranteed, is for four years. And so it could happen to any of us. If a really good job comes along, you know, for our career, any of us could resign. It doesn't have to do with being part-time or full-time, it's just the way that life is. As far as diversity goes, I think having a full-time councillor will actually be the opposite, because you're going to be trying to get someone who has a career going, you know, that might have a good pension, to sacrifice their pension and become, you know, a councillor, a full-time councillor, with only a four-year guarantee of an income. What are they going to do in the next election if they don't get voted in? So I think then that way, the diversity is going to be down to someone who's retired or someone who's independently wealthy, who can risk that full-time job they had to run for office, and then, you know, just do it, do this for four years and see what happens in the next election. I think, too, that you're going to probably have less councillors, which mean, because they're going to be wanting a full-time salary, and there's only so much money in our budget, and that means that less access to councillors. Right now, there's 12 of us, plus the mayor, that people can run to with less councillors, less access. I could go on and on, I don't want to waste any time. I think everyone gets the point, that I am really against this, and for that reason, I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor Camden.
Thank you. Through you, I guess the only thing I would say is that based on the open-endedness of the motion itself, this, it could come back that the recommendation is we stay exactly the way we are. So all things are on the table. I think that there's a lot of different things that we all go through as councillors that maybe not everybody understands or appreciates till you're sitting in one of these chairs, the challenges. I know when I decided I was going to run for council, I receive, I ended up speaking to an individual in the community to get advice, the late Joe Hawkins, and he asked me about 15 questions in a row. He just hammered me with questions. And in hindsight, they were really quite brilliant questions. What do you do for a living? What does your spouse do? Does your spouse support you? Does she understand, you know, all these different things that you're going to have to go through when you get on council? Because the things that I think these people are going to be considering are not just what do we get paid and who do we represent? It is how do you manage your family life? How do you end up in this chair and manage conflicts so that a councillor may not be declaring conflicts all the time or put them in a position? So they're going to be weighing a lot of things that we could go on and on about for a really long time, which the mayor's advice is not to do. But I feel like, I feel like we should keep in mind that if we do explore this, it could come back exactly the way it is right now, and with a few changes. So it's not, it's not pushing us in one direction, it could come back the same, and at least then we'll know that we went through the exercise, and we're doing the right thing. So I'm interested to see how it all pans out.
Thank you. Anyone else for us to speak? Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to support what councillor O'Sannick said. I'm very skeptical about this, about the full-time, part-time. I just want to ask a question of the clerk first. Of course, every four years, we have a committee that looks at compensation and workload and all that sort of thing. Is this the motion, or is that going to come later?
Through your worship, this is not the motion with respect to that.
No, so it's coming up.
And there'll be a staff report coming forward to council either at the next meeting or the following year with respect to the process, the mandate, and the recruitment efforts that we'll undertake.
I appreciate that. I hear what councillor...
I hear what councillor Holland was saying, and I've heard councillor Stroud, especially those who have young children. I don't know how you do it, how you balance those things. I remember when I was thinking of running, don't swallow your cud when you hear this, I phoned a former councillor and said, so how many times do you have to be out in a week? And they said, oh, probably cup two. The liars! I mean, they apparently thought maybe I should run, right? So they made it sound a whole lot better than it actually is. The mayor's probably dying, because we know how much of the extra stuff that he has to do. So if that was all it was about, I think this wouldn't be in front of us, right? So, and it's not even, as councillor Shell said, all about meetings, it's about all the stuff you do in between meetings and so on. I do have to say one thing, though. I'm not at all sure that the workload has increased. I actually, my own feeling is it's about the same, or maybe a little less. Mostly, in my view, because we did so much through the official plan before, and we got so many master plans in place, staff are initiating a lot of stuff, which was much, much more professional, rather ad hoc before. And so I think as a city, we're much better organized, and we can thank staff for that, I think largely. I mean, some good decisions are made by various councils along the way. But that doesn't help the situation that councillor Holland was talking about, or those with children, especially a single parent, and I'm very, but I am very, and I'm very sympathetic to that. I am cautious, though, about whether we're ready for full-time councillors, and what that would mean. I do think the idea of research assistants is a good idea, but that means more money. Are you willing to vote for that? Something we'd have to think about. And so I think that, I think that I'll vote for the motion, simply because I think a good, open discussion is important and useful. If somebody else votes against it, I would certainly understand. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the amended motion? Unfortunately, I want a turn. So councillor Neil, you were the last deputy mayor, if you don't mind.
I will, and I think I recognize you.
Thank you.
I try to keep it brief, I try not to say that normally, but anyway. We've got to remember what this is. This is a motion giving direction to staff who has already told us that they're going to do the, the every-four-years routine of getting a citizens committee together to look at remuneration workload. So what, really what needs to be in this motion is direction that we don't want to be left out in that, in that analysis. So we've got a pretty good motion here, that started with, and to me, the best part of it, is the very last seven words, "together with other options to ease workload." So I just got to ask the clerk, because he's the one that's going to be writing the next step. Is that wording, does that, in your mind, include things that have been mentioned, such as the option to perhaps hire an assistant, the option perhaps to, for other kinds of support for individual councillors, such as, for example, the mayor has, the mayor's office has, does it include options to reduce workload from the other side, from the committee's side? Does it, does it involve all of the, is the citizens committee going to have all of these things spelled out for them? Because they're not here tonight, and they may not be listening.
Through you, Mr Mayor, the short answer is yes. We refer to all options. So all options will be on the table with respect to not just the remuneration in terms of dollars, but also with respect to workload. And that includes things that have been referenced this evening as well.
That's, that's great. It's very comforting to hear. I had sent you an amendment earlier, around the idea of assistance, but I'm not going to submit that amendment. However, I did write a much simpler version here, which is just the bottom part of this sheet, and I'm going to submit, submit this as a simpler amendment instead. I'll just read it, and then I'll give it to you. It says, at the very end, comma, "including the option for councillors to hire an assistant, subject to a limited annual amount for compensation to be specified, to be specified by the citizens committee." Just that, just that. So I'm looking for a second or, okay, it's, but you've got the chair, so.
I've got the chair.
Okay. So I guess, I don't need to, I think we've already stayed to what the rationale is, so on the amendment, it's just, I want the option to hire an assistant spelled out, and I'm thinking of something along the lines that councillor Neil had mentioned, where a shared assistant, not a full assistant per councillor, but I'm, a pool perhaps of three or four assistants, or a part-time assistant that's compensated a very small annual amount. Of course, that amount will be specified by the citizens committees, so whatever they feel comfortable as an extra expense. Keeping in mind, we already have an expense account of sorts for the, for the travel, for, for going to conferences, for legal expenses, and all these other things, for parking passes, transit passes. There are, there is a list of expenses that gets reported every year, so that, the, I, thinking on the amendment is not out of keeping with what we're already have as councillor expenses. So this is a form of support that we would have as councillors, and not extra remuneration for us. So it's extra support in the form of an assistant. So I don't know if, if it's ready to be, to go up on the-
Yes. And I recognize the mayor.
Thank you, Mr Former Deputy Mayor. I'm going to ask council to vote against this. I understand where the deputy mayor is coming from, but this is what I cautioned at the beginning, that I think it's unwise, at this point, for us to spell out any specific options. The only reason why this motion mentions the potential to move from part-time to full-time is because that is a very political decision that needs to be spelled out in black and white for the committee that's going to be looking at this. I think any other option besides that is starting, council is starting to steer one way or the other. So I think that, given there's the very general language that there are other options to ease workload, I think that the committee will be very well positioned to be able to make any recommendations about what other options might look at, and what the cost of those options would be. I think it's unwise for council to take a stand at this point, so unfortunately, I can't support this, would ask council not to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I recognize councillor George.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Deputy Mayor. I'll echo the mayor's comments. I think we're, it's a good point the councillor has made, but this isn't the time or place. Once the committee comes back with their recommendation, then that's the opportunity to bring these types of options forward, as anybody on council too, and there'll be some time to consider it. So I agree totally, that's exactly what I was going to say, but you didn't see my hand go up, and it was much quicker than his. Anyways, so I'm not going to support this.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Would you like to speak last?
Just, just to read, so this is all it's adding, another, another sentence at the end. So it's spelling out the words, "with other options to increase," sorry, "with other options to ease workload, comma, including the option for councillors to hire an assistant, subject to a limited annual amount for compensation to be specified by the citizens committee." And I'm happy to let it live or die at your discretion, because it's pretty simple what I'm asking for here. Thank you.
So I shall call the question. And the former deputy mayor hands back the chair to the deputy mayor.
So I believe I'm, I'm still on my original motion at time, and I'm just going to say I'm, I plan to support the original motion of his worship with the amendment, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the mayor's amended motion?
Just for clarification, that last vote, it did lose five to seven, so for those that are wondering what the vote was, it was five to seven in terms of lost.
The motion lost, yes. Sorry, I didn't mention, well, it would have been-
That would have been me, yes. The motion failed.
Yes. Thanks for pointing that out, though. So that's it. I've set my piece, I'm planning to support the amended motion. Thank you. Right. I still have the chair. Does anyone else wish to speak? Your worship.
Thank you for the, the great discussion and comments around the table. I will say a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to speak in support of what, some of what councillor O'Sannick said. I'm not at all convinced that moving to full-time councillors is the way to go. I think that the, we all agree that the goal is to ensure that we attract the best possible people to future councils. The way to get there is not at all clear. There is no silver bullet, there are pros and cons to all different options, but I think it's good to have that discussion, and we will make a decision one way or the other. Just to manage expectations, though, I think that if there was to be a recommendation to move to full-time councillors, it would probably require a ward review, maybe reducing the number of districts, which is not going to happen in time for the next election. So this would be a process that I think would need to take some time, so we'll have the discussion. If that's the direction the citizens committee recommends, that's going to take some time, and a lot of further community debate and discussion. So it could very well be that there's some short-term interim options as well that can be explored. So with that, appreciate the comments, and look forward to seeing what our citizens committee comes up with. Thank you.
Okay, so we're at the point where I'm going to call the vote. On the motion as amended. And that passes with the first amendment, but not the second. And your worship has the chair back.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to a new motion number two, moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by mayor Patterson. Whereas those retiring from the Canadian Armed Forces with at least twenty-five years of service are presented with a Canadian flag during their retirement ceremony, and whereas retiring members have the option to have that Canadian flag to be presented at the ceremony flown at the location of their choice, and whereas the existing City of Kingston flag display and flying policy does not include wording that would guide the flying Canadian flags at City Hall for Canadian Armed Forces retirement ceremonies, and whereas retiring Canadian Armed Forces members who call Kingston their home have recently requested their retirement flag be flown at City Hall, therefore be it resolved that notwithstanding the flag pol, display and flying policy, Kingston City Council approved the raising of the flag for Major Steve Charcheck on May 3, 2017, in recognition of his retirement ceremony. Councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So just so everybody knows, we did essentially amend, or have a motion to amend the admin policy for this. It hasn't passed yet, and as such, this is time-sensitive, as in staff now has the flag, it will be going up tomorrow. So I hope everybody can support this. It's probably going to be one of the final ones before that new policy hopefully comes through, and then the commemoration of this will go through the actual flag policy in the future. So I hope everybody can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Councillor Hutchinson?
I have concerns about the original motion, that's supposed to go to amend poll, and I don't know what's coming forward there. And I have concerns about this one. My concern is, of course, we appreciate the work and efforts of our armed forces, but we appreciate a lot of other citizens. So my first question is of the clerk, I believe. Do we fly the Canadian flag now? I would think we do, but I'm just wondering what's going on here.
Mr Clerk? Through your worship, the answer is yes, we do fly the flag.
I didn't, I was being spoken to.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got the Canadian flag up there now, and I'm glad to hear that. I thought we did, but I wanted to be sure. So the, the other issue is that we have a lot of individuals in our, in our community that we can and sometimes do recognize. We never can recognize everybody, but I'm not quite sure what privileges people of the armed forces. We could have a firefighter, you know, as well, who's risking his life for the public, or a police officer, or a municipal employee of thirty-five years that did sterling work, or the chief of surgery, or a teacher of thirty years' experience, or I could go on a long time, with lots of people. So I'm not sure how we're going to accommodate all these people if you don't have a reason why you're going to privilege people of the armed forces, which, as I say, are worthy of recognition. And, but I think we should be recognizing groups, okay, which we do do all the time, right? We have days for them, weeks for them, months for them, and that's good. And we fly flags for certain causes and so on, but that involves groups of people, so we're covering a fair bit of ground when we do this. I've never noticed before to fly flags for individuals, unless they were very high, perhaps we've done it for very high-profile people. So nothing against the two gentlemen that came before, or this gentleman, I don't know them, and they may have sterling records, but so do a lot of other people. And I'm not sure we should be getting into that consideration. So those are my questions. If the mover and the second are want to respond, I'm fine, you know, I'm willing to be educated.
So I, I think that the best, the best way to do that, councillor Hutchinson, is, given that the mover can speak last, we'll give him that opportunity at that point. So anybody else that wishes to speak?
Councillor Bohm, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. And to address that question from councillor Hutchinson, essentially, upon retiring from the Canadian Armed Forces, a person who has served a substantial amount of time, I can't remember the exact time here, but it's a substantial amount of time, is presented a flag upon retirement, and they have the option to be able to ask to have it flown somewhere. So it will be flown at City Hall tomorrow, then it will be taken down after only one day, be given back to them, and then be used in their retirement ceremony. So this is not something that would be, you know, normal, commonplace, every day, three thousand people, you know, constantly, it's, it's after an extended career in the military, and then they have that option. So that is where this is essentially originating from, and it will be reviewed going with the former motion by admin policy, so that this is something where, you know, it is an extended service period that would garner somebody this type of commendation from the city. So with that, I hope that answers your question. It's not something that would be coming day after day after day for many multitudes of individuals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So just before we call the vote on new motion number two, it's ten forty-five, so I'm looking for a motion to extend the meeting, please. Moved by councillor Neil. Okay, so a motion to extend the meeting to complete the agenda, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Shell. Please vote. And that carries ten to two. Okay, so on the, we'll call the vote then on new motion number two, please. Please vote.
One more, one more, please.
And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor Camden, seconded by councillor George, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2017-11, held Tuesday, April 18, 2017, be confirmed.
Please vote. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications, is there any other business? Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. And as I remember-
Thank you. And as I remember sharing an email with all of council, I just have a few concerns about governance and oversight as it appears recently. And this is more in the direction of trying to make oversight and governance here at Kingston a little bit better than it has been just in one particular aspect. And if you recall from that particular email, sometimes we get reports with the council documents, and sometimes we don't. And if we look at the EITP one this time, there were two reports that came with, say, three and four, but none that came with one and two. And it occurs to me that perhaps we could ask that staff err on the side of most useful, or on that side of more information, more openness, rather than on the side of less.
So, councillor McLaren, I'm just going to stop you there, because other business is not a place to steer into a policy direction. I think you've raised a point that you can bring forward a motion, asking for a change of policy, for example, in terms of, you know, when reports are, are, are brought forward. But I caution against getting into that discussion at this point.
So, having talked to the clerk ahead of time, this wasn't, it was, the solution was presented, but it was meant to be congratulatory. This is in, the solution had been found. But just for my own edification, if I had wanted to raise an issue that concerns me and is to the benefit of all, where would be the best place during the council agenda?
Maybe let me know beforehand, and then I can, I can tell you.
Okay. So, essentially, what I did, having talked to the clerk, he did suggest that he would err on the side of more openness. If I heard you correctly, is that correct?
I believe staff always errors on the side of openness and transparency.
Okay.
That's not a concern.
So, in this case, if I may, for the sake of the edification of staff and all, when there's a report that has only engineering drawings in it, perhaps a bit more rationale might be necessary. Or when it's saying that we're supposed to receive statistics, it might be helpful to actually get those statistics in the council documents. And it's more also for the sake of the public. I mean, it's easy for me to go get them.
So, okay, councillor McLaren, I'm not, I'm not trying to make an issue out of this, but this is, this is not something that should be raised under other business. I, I'm not saying that the point is invalid, but it's better to bring forward a motion with direction than you can have five minutes to speak, and we can pass a motion if we want to direct staff to, to make changes. I'm just, I'm cautious about other business being used to, to raise bigger issues about the way that we operate as, as council. So, can I just ask you just to either, either quickly make a summarizing point, or to, to talk to me, and we can find a way to bring something forward at your next meeting?
Summarizing point. In the open, in the, in the, on the principle of open governance, it's always better to err on the side of giving more information than less information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, if there's no other business, Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Okay, we do have five bylaw votes tonight. Councillor Camden, you're excused for the first two. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Shell, that bylaw four be given its first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Shell, that bylaw four be given its third reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Shell, that bylaws one through three, and five, and six be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Shell, that clause eleven point three four of bylaw number two thousand and ten dash one be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws two, three, and five three readings.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Shell, that bylaws two through six be given their third reading.
Councillor Neil?
Just a quick question. We very, very routinely pass the same night, first, second, and third reading. And I know in the past, that has happened when it's been a time-sensitive issue, but we seem to be doing it more and more routinely now than in the past. And perhaps, and, and in future, I think I will ask how time-sensitive a third reading required on the same night actually is.
So, so I think what I'll say is, we, we have a policy in place about when we do three readings on the same night. So, perhaps I could ask staff to, to remind council to share that information, and if there's a desire to change that policy, then certainly we can invite a motion to explore that.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Turner. Please vote.
Still waiting for two?
Everyone, please vote, so we can go home. And that carries. Thank you very much.